... everybody, it is Monday, March 25th, 2019. It is now officially spring, and that's great. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of the country, and to one nation, united states, united in all forms and in all intents.
Okay, let's get to work. Madam clerk?
Counsel Perry?
Present.
Counsel Hilton?
Present.
Counsel DiMederos?
Present.
Counsel Katz?
Present.
Counsel Coulter?
Present.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Drix?
Present.
All present. Counsel Perry? Will you push your nameplate down to you?
Okay, so we get confused. All right, we're seven to seven here. Consent agenda, we have four items. Approval of council and executive session minutes from March 11th this year. We have various minutes from the Budget Committee, the Cemetery Commission, the Personnel Board, Recycling and Landfill. We have four items of correspondence, one from the town of Westerly reporting, I'm sorry, supporting governor's fiscal year budget initiatives, Westwark and Central Falls resolutions regarding municipal tobacco licensing and campaign for tobacco-free kids, DEM project priority list request for the state fiscal year 2020, that's been referred to the town administrator and director Rogers for further comment, and the town of Portsmouth resolutions regarding the Transportation Department requesting that DOT reject the proposed TAP and STIP cuts. And we also have the February monthly budget and revenue reports from our treasurer. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to take off CA four.
CA four, that's the treasurer's report. Any others? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve CA one through three as shown?
So moved.
Second.
And I'll proceed right to a vote. All is in favor? Okay, Counsel Hilton, CA four. Treasurer Denise Sarette, February monthly budget and revenue reports.
I know that the town administrator is watching this, but the salary for the building official account is getting closer and closer again to being zero. And I'm also curious, because I know that our part-time zoning official left, I mean quit, and, but it shows up as a month-to-date amount in that account. So is that being just applied towards the building official? Do we know, or what the...
With respect to the last point, municipal co-conselling, which is the entity that provides the interim services, they also provide zoning-related services. So they have someone do some of the zoning work that still needs to be done, and that gets charged to that account.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
And I have spoken with the treasurer. We are aware that we, once again, are very close, if not already over, and we will have to request another transfer, which will be either the next meeting or the meeting after. We're looking at currently where the room might be, in which accounts to do that. So, yeah, we're on it, but you're absolutely right, we're very close.
Thank you, that was it.
I do have a question, too. The street lighting account, percent expended is 127 percent. Are we anticipating that we need more money in that account? Will there be further expenses in that account?
I believe we do, and the treasurer actually will be able to speak to that.
Which account, Denise, I'm sorry?
On the street lighting, six, um...
Thank you.
Thirty-three eighty.
Yep.
It's on page six.
Good evening, Denise Sarette, town treasurer. Page six. So the last couple of reports that I have issued to the council pointing out the streetlights, we had been talking to Prism and National Grid about the rebate that we are expecting. We did have a meeting with them, and they do agree that we are due a rebate. It's a real slow process, obviously. It's been slow to date. Obviously, the fiscal '19 budget was woefully under budget. I can make supposition on how that happened, but it's really pointless at this point. But Jan and I have been looking at it, along with any other accounts that we think we could be running short on. But we are expecting a rebate.
And how much is that rebate?
Well, they, they wouldn't give us...
Everyone's laughing at me.
I know. Originally, two years ago, when this whole project started, it was estimated to be around 140,000. And then, all of a sudden, it became sixty, like, 8,000, which we did get. And it looks like possibly maybe 20 or 30.
All right.
So we are keeping an eye on it.
Thank you.
I guess it doesn't say what we're doing in this report, but I think it means receive and file like normal on the consent agenda. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Are we prepared to do that?
I'll move that.
Second.
Any further discussion or commentary on that? Hearing none, all is in favor? Thank you.
Is there an open...
Okay, yes, we have an open form. I have two items on the sign-ups. One is boards and commissions, and one is the town council governance policy. That's already on the agenda. Ms. Barbara Pelletier, boards and commissions, is it the policy or something more general that you were wishing? Was it the policy that you wanted to speak to, or something more general?
More general.
Okay, come on.
I had a couple of ideas. Barbara Pelletier, 104 Barney Field Drive. As you know, I've been on commissions and boards for a number of years, and a number of commissions and boards, and a few items have struck me that, first of all, I don't think a lot of our citizens actually know how much work is done by some of these volunteer boards and commissions. And I think that if you were to, for instance, implement a system where you had a quarter, that each board and commission has to submit a quarterly report to you that is somehow rather reviewed by you and at a public meeting, I think it would draw attention to the board and commission, plus give the general public an idea of what, if they're interested in it, they could do on any one of these commissions. And some of these commissions really have a hard time finding enough members. And I think maybe you would attract people to the board and commission, and you know, something that if you, if you're asked to make a report, human nature being as it is, you're probably gonna do your best and gonna do a little bit extra, so you would actually, I think, get more out of your volunteers, and you might generate community interest. And another thing is if you had some of these boards and commissions meet several times a year as a unit, not everyone, but just one or two members, then they can bounce ideas around amongst each other, how they can maybe make an event happen, two, three of them combining to do something. It's just another thought. And another thing is you should also highly consider including your representative to discover Newport onto, into all of these things, because she or he are a clue to what tourism wants, and we are a tourist destination of some nature or another anyhow. So I think that input from Newport would be crucial to you, too. And I do believe that maybe something might come out of that. And also, the other thing that I think you might do, news coverage isn't what it used to be in the newspapers. So sometimes you have these meetings, and you don't really know, unless you were here, what happened. So maybe if, within the week of the meeting, somewhere or rather, you make a summary of what happened, like, he was appointed, he resigned, and we bought a new motor for the boat, just the bare essentials of any meeting, if that was posted on the town website, that people could get used to seeing that what happens, and maybe more people would actually be engaged and, and be interested in town government. But those are just thoughts, and it's not a criticism, criticism, I'm just trying to be helpful, thank you.
Well, I can, I can give you a preview on the reporting idea. That has been in past drafts of the governance of the board and commission policy, and that will come up. That piece, for sure, will come up a little bit later today, and then all the other ones I think are duly noted. Thank you. So what I'll do is I'll hold the governance policy item, and then the person that signed up will be able to go first when we get to that on the item, on the, on the agenda. Okay, so we have no formal public hearings. We do have, we're not wearing our board of licensing hat here, and we have...
Didn't you say that two people sign up? Two people?
We did. The other one was on the town governance policy, which is already on the agenda. So they'll, I'll go first when we get to that. So we have two, two requests for renewals of existing license for private investigators. I guess we'll take them one at a time. I will attempt to say this name correctly, Mr. John Skrytke.
Yes.
Skripyak, my apologies. And who owns this one? Is it Madam Clerk?
I have everything I need for it.
This is a renewal?
Yes.
Okay. The applicant here.
Is it a re, it's a new request, isn't it?
These are just renewals, so I think these are ordinary course, unless I hear objection or discussion. Okay? Sure.
What, Donna? Are you talking to us, Donna?
This is a renewal from last year, or from two years?
Several years.
Like, how?
Years. Oh, I see what you're looking at.
So on the back, on the, I guess our question is, it indicates a criminal history from 2015, but it sounds like maybe...
So this is, so we didn't know this last time?
Did we already know this last time, or has this happened since last time?
It looks like the matter was dismissed under Rule 48A.
Right.
So it hasn't been expunged, but, but...
Right.
It was dismissed, so I don't...
I don't think it's a particular issue personally, but...
I just didn't understand.
Oh, I see what you're talking about. Oh, all right. I don't remember.
So we have, we have a matter that was dismissed, so certainly wasn't, wasn't any kind of a 48A dismissal, it just hasn't been expunged, so. Any further discussion? Any objection to proceeding to vote? This is a renewal, so this is an existing license. All is in favor, oh, sorry, I need a motion.
Yes.
Trying to move quick.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to renew the license of John Skripyak through, these are through when? Nancy?
They annual.
Annual.
So through... Whenever they apply, it's not like on...
So through March of 2020.
Second.
Okay, we have a live motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the renewal? Thank you. Okay, same idea, this is a renewal, request for private investigator license, Mr. Charles Mokahi?
Mokahi.
Mokahi?
He was the police officer, that's why I called that name.
Don't think we need interviews on renewals, but...
No, we don't.
President, they're welcome to be heard, otherwise, any further discussion?
No, I only have one question, and I doubt it matters to the applicant, but it says this renewal's gonna be heard on 4/22/2019, does that matter? I don't think it does.
We were able to get it.
And so it's all okay?
Yes.
Okay.
This isn't anything advertised during...
Okay. In that case, I'll make a motion to renew the license of Charles Armokahi through March 25th, 2020.
Second.
You don't have an open meeting issue with this? Okay, all is in favor? Thank you. Seven off. Okay. We are done being a board of licensing, we're back to being a town council. Appointments and resignations. The Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Commission appointment, this would be for one, unexpired two-year term, expiring July 15th of 2020. We have a new request, which is great, from Mr. Jason Clermont. How'd I do on that name?
Good.
Okay, great.
That was good. That was kind of simple.
If you'd like, would you like to come on up and have, feel free to have a seat? Very informal, first of all, thank you for applying and agreeing to come here and talk. I always just start off saying, if you just want to tell us a little bit about yourself in general, and what interests you about the position?
Certainly.
And then it will just be an open floor.
Sure, great. Yeah, so my wife and I bought a house in Tiverton a little over a year ago, and really, one of the more appealing things why we decided to move to Tiverton was really the proximity to coastal resources. I'm a fisheries research biologist by trade. I've been in the marine science research and conservation sphere for about 20 years or so, so it is my life's work. I kayak and surf as well, so take advantage of the coastal resources quite often, on an almost daily basis. And it just, I wanted to get into public service, I wanted to really cut my teeth and serve the town, and the harbor commission just seemed like a natural fit, where I could leverage some of my experience with grant writing, stakeholder engagement, and things of that nature, but also learn from the current members about public service and about town service as well. So that's kind of where I'm coming at it.
Do you have a couple of extra outboard motors you're not using?
Fortunately, no. I'm hoping to get a ride and tie to the boat. Use a kayak.
Mr. Clermont, I'd like to thank you for applying. Your resume is quite impressive for this position.
Thank you.
And thank you for showing some interest. I really don't have any questions, they're all answered right here, and I can see you're very experienced, but thank you for showing interest.
You're quite welcome, thank you.
I agree.
You agree.
I'd like to make a motion to, to, wait, yeah, thank you, Nancy, to waive our policy and appoint Mr. Clermont to the Harbor and Coastal Water Management Commission.
Second.
I'll second that.
I'm okay with that, but you called me on that last time I tried, so I'm sure you're okay with that.
We didn't call you on that.
That's fine.
You didn't have to leave.
Okay. Further discussion?
I'm going to ask you to do that as a two-step process.
Yeah, I think I have to, yeah, I did this one.
And then, secondly, as a approval of the point.
I guess we didn't say interview only on the agenda, so we're...
So it's a motion, so it's a motion to waive our polit, our current policy to wait until the next meeting to appoint.
I just have one question. Have you attended any of their meetings at all?
No, I have not, no. I plan on going, I'm leaving next Monday, is the person.
Yes.
You may change your mind.
You're in, you're in.
Once we got you, we got you.
So I did make the most...
Did you get a second on that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so this is a procedural motion, only not on the merits. Will the council waive its, well, we can dispute whether the last policy is binding as of this moment, but let's, as if it were, all is in favor of the waiver? Okay. And then, we have a motion on the main motion.
I move it.
All right. Will there be a second?
Second.
Is that Trish? Okay, thank you. All is in favor? Thank you.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And I think I'm the liaison to that commission, so...
You're actually the liaison to that.
No.
If you weren't here, who would?
Speaking of outboard engines, so, let's ask our town solicitor.
So are we gonna have an update?
Okay, so our, Mr. Administrator and Solicitor are co-sponsoring an update on the bid process for marine outboard engines and the use of capital reserve account. So I will turn it over to you.
It's really just an update on the process, and the solicitor determined that we did have to go out to bid, so that's what we're doing, and it has been advertised accordingly. And I believe the applications or the proposals are due very early April.
Next week.
Rob?
Okay.
I do have one question, it also says in use of the capital reserve account. After the meeting, I realized that I didn't bring something up, that we're using that capital reserve account, that balance, for next year's budget. If you look at next year's budget, we're using that to offset...
I was not aware of that until someone told me today.
Okay, so we may have to go somewhere else, I would think.
Well, it's currently, is still in that account, right? I mean, it hasn't been...
Yeah, it's currently still in that account, but if we use it, then we'd have to find somewhere else to offset that.
I agree, I agree, yeah.
In the new budget.
Well, I'm not so sure, I mean, it's, it's an estimate of what's gonna happen, and if, if the resolution to do, repeat putting money into that account passes, then after this fiscal year, more money will go into that account.
We would hope that it would cover it, but we don't know that. This budget is pretty tight right now, and there's already accounts in the red, so it worries me a little bit that that may not happen, that we might not put 50,000 in there, or 55,000.
Well, I'm just, it's, it's an estimate, so it's not as...
Well, I mean, since the, can we go to the budget committee, right? Because that was in Justin's budget that was sent there, can we go to the budget committee and say, you know, we have an emergency that we need to use this for, they haven't taken their final vote on revenue numbers, and, and let them know that, you know, the funds that we anticipated to be in that, remaining in that account, won't be remaining in that account?
Can I just ask, I'm not sure I understand, I, the, the money, the money is budgeted as a capital reserve for next fiscal year, that, it, it, there is money budgeted for the capital reserves for next fiscal year. If you spend this now, you will start that year with a smaller number, but it's not as if that was already planned to be spent on something, right?
Yes, it was.
That account balance would shrink?
No, no, no.
And so your reserves...
He took it, he took it out of revenue. He, he put it in revenue to take that out, to take the remaining balance out, so, which would make it zero. So if we take that balance and buy outdoor motors, then that's not part of our revenue anymore, or what we're bringing in to balance the budget. You see what I'm saying? What does, at the end of the budget, when it shows everything that's going to make this budget work, the capital reserve was put in there 55,000 to spend on capital for next year.
So it was a transfer from this year to next year of 55,000?
Well, it's not really a transfer, it rolls over.
Brawl over?
So, so if that 55 is no longer there, or if we have less there than the, than next year's budget, it's not balanced.
It, well, it reduces your reserve for next year.
No, no. He took, it, it says, capital reserve 55,000 from the capital reserve budget, it doesn't say from the general fund, it said, from the general fund, we're taking over 700, I think, but from the capital, we took 55, which is what we have in there. So that's zero now, if we, we plan on rolling that over, apparently, so that really doesn't exist, and if we take from there, next year, that's not there.
But those are, I'm sorry, I don't mean to...
No.
... the point, I just want to understand it, so I can, I can give you an opinion on this at some point, so...
Well, it's kind of complicated, because we've never quite done this before.
But, but that, but that's a budgeted number, so if it's 55,000 in your budget, it could be 56,000, or it could be 54,000, just...
No, no, it's presently, we have 55 in there. In next year's budget, that 55 went over here. Okay, so it's not here anymore, really, theoretically, if we're gonna use it to balance our budget next year. So if, if we use it now...
It's in the new, it's gonna roll over to the new budget, and it was already counted as...
Right, but, but...
Money.
But, they want to spend it.
So if, if you take it out, what do we do about the zero now in the new budget?
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but we still need the, how do we resolve this?
Well, that's why I'm, that's why I'm asking, since the budget committee has not yet taken a final vote, and we didn't necessarily anticipate that this was the solution to the engine problem, could we not notify the budget committee that, you know...
That money no longer exists.
These funds that, that were there are being, you know, are being allocated for something in this year's budget.
I'm not sure it matters the timing, though, because what if in, in June, you need to spend another $3,000 from some reserve account, and you vote to do that? You don't, you don't back, well, reserve accounts are four, right? That's, so you don't have to go back to the budget committee on June 20th to get approval to spend money out of a account that was approved for reserves this year.
But, Geo, if, okay, but they're counting on that to balance their budget. If we spend it, it's not there to balance next year's budget.
But again, these are estimates, there may be another influx of revenue to this account, and a lot of the expenditures on the expenditures side, we may not, we may not end up doing, the budget committee may not end up funding those.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the...
Well, then I think we should tell the budget committee that that, that doesn't exist right now, and hopefully, when we roll over money next year, if we do, hopefully there'll be $55,000 in there to balance their budget.
I guess that, that's maybe the procedural point, I'm not sure it's a council issue, but I think the budget committee may be, they have to pick a point in time, right? You can only do revenue estimates and then do a budget based on those estimates, you can't adjust it every day based on the realities of your budget.
Right, but this isn't, but this isn't an estimate, this is, this is physical capital dollars.
It's just an estimate.
This is physical capital dollars that exist in the, that existed in our budget this year.
I understand.
And since they haven't been spent, when Counselor Katz did his budget, he took those and applied those towards next year's capital budget.
I understand.
Okay? Next year's capital budget doesn't have boat engines in it. It has a whole bunch of other stuff, but it doesn't have boat engines.
I think my question is, is, at what point do you, do you set those numbers in stone? So I'm, I'm familiar with the state process, where they have a revenue estimating conference, and they do it twice leading up to the, the budget in June, but then when they have that in May, they don't adjust after that, even though they might approve a budget in June, and those numbers will all have changed. I, I just, I worry about going down that slippery slope of having to make all these adjustments and...
Well, I can understand what you're saying, but it shouldn't have been included in next year's budget, and if this all changes.
The town council discussed this at our meeting at the senior center, and I'm pretty sure I said at that time, it's an estimate, and we can expect that there will be more money put into this account. It's not, it's not as, it's not as simple as saying, this money here is the money that's going in here, it's an estimate of what will be in account at the end of the year. If it's incorrect, the expenditures are approved separately, and we can either not do something or find the money elsewhere. This is just basic budgeting.
Justin, it is the exact amount that's in there.
It is not, it is not, it's $50,000.
So can I, can I just jump in? First of all, there's no version, we're not gonna prove anything tonight, because you're, you've decided to go to bid conference. Okay. And then, on the question of, aside from...
Well, it's down the agenda, the capital thing, that's why.
Agreed. And aside from the budgeting protocol question, are, are we resolved on what I think was at least a quasi-legal question on, or is that later on the agenda? Are you prepared to...
I, I can, I can discuss it now, I can tell you just, just quickly, and maybe this solves it, is that, the, the opinion I provided last time, I, I have not varied from, I believe you have the authority to do it upon findings, that, that, that is the interpretation of that statute. I think what I saw on the new resolutions is much clearer, and it, it avoids you having to take that extra step, but, but I don't think you're prohibited from approving it once the bids come back and you have a number to approve, a contract to approve.
Okay.
My, my sense is, I'm not sure we have seven out of seven agreement, but I feel like there's a majority or better that agrees with that legal interpretation. Is that, I'm trying to force it, okay.
Yeah.
So, so do we need to resolve the budgeting protocol question now, or should we wait and see what happens?
No, but I think maybe we should think about somewhere else to get the money from, or notify the budget committee.
Sorry. I just have a more practical question. So we expect proposals to come in very soon. I would feel uncomfortable accepting one of those proposals if I am not clear as to whether or not the money is available to pay for it. So I, I need some assurance that, you know, that can be done, because I, I don't want to make any representations that I can then not follow up on, so. I may be wrong in perceiving it as such, but, you know, please set me straight.
Striksmann's a very fair comment. So why don't we stay the course, and any of us, well, first of all, the minutes of this meeting and the video are available for inspection of the budget committee, and any of us are always free to talk to the budget committee, and we can advise them. I can also wear my liaison hat and attempt to explain the two sides to this. Does that get us through tonight's meeting? But I, I think you're hearing from the council, the intent is there, once you get to the bid process.
Well, one other thing, because I don't believe I am the person to bring a message to the budget committee that this is an issue that they may want to consider, so, and I do think... do think, again, practically speaking, it would probably be helpful to communicate it sooner rather than later. But who would do it?
Well, I, I would think we'd need a vote to, to authorize somebody to inform the Budget Committee officially, and it's not something I, I think it's frivolous, so I wouldn't agree to that myself.
Wait, you wouldn't agree to what, Justin?
I wouldn't agree to the town council instructing one of its members or somebody else to go to the Budget Committee and inform them that this money is not going to be there, because we don't know that it's an estimate of revenue for next year.
Correct.
Well, maybe we should tell them that it might not be there. Does that sound okay?
Well, as the council president just said, you're, you're free to go in your own capacity and tell them that, if that's your belief.
What I, what I do, unless I hear an objection, is I will, I'll reach out to the Budget Committee Chair and Vice Chair, and invite them, respectfully invite them to watch this segment of the video. And then, of course, any of us that wants to speak, as any other member of the public is free to do that. Is that, I think I can do that much.
Yeah.
And I would, the clerk just helpfully pointed out that the bids are due back on April 5th. You have a meeting scheduled on April 8th, so I would presume that that agenda item would be on the April 8th meeting, and they would have a precise figure at that point, if you are, in fact, to approve the contract at your April 8th meeting.
That might be just past the deadline, though, right? Is April 4th the real deadline of deadlines? Okay, so April 4th is, what I don't know is if there's another Budget Committee meeting. Well, either way, it would be, it would not be, yeah, so we might just.
It would be too late.
But, but this is a tension that all budgeting bodies have at some point.
Yep.
One time, once upon a time, I'd even suggested, why don't we do the FTR, you know, like in August, after the state numbers really come in, but that was horrible, apparently.
But if there's any, I mean, I agree with Justin that this was brought up at our meeting at the senior center, and it was made clear it was an estimate, and it, it's going to be not a solid number, so.
No, but I, I do think that, I, I do think when you know that you're spending something, you know, when you actually know that you're spending this money, that you have the, an obligation, not just to the Budget Committee, but to the voters as well, to be completely transparent. And if we know that we're going to spend this money to replace these engines, then I think the most clear, transparent thing to do is to notify the Budget Committee that, you know, this amount of money that, that we'd included in revenue for next year, even though the rest of it is estimates, that, but this amount that we'd included, which is a known number, you know, is going to be allocated in this year, which it legally can be, to replace the boat engines. That's just my opinion.
Just let them know.
Go ahead. With regard to the question of, just because it's come up, the, the capital being used for this purpose, I do want to just re-up my suggestion that I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to spend this capital money on, on budgeted items, for the reason that, over the, over the span between the two meetings, somebody mentioned that it's been, the money's been spent on various things, including carpets. And that's kind of the great example of what I'm worried about, is that this, we approve and argue about, and the Budget Committee argues about, and we argue about, and voters argue about, everything on, on a capital list that we're going to spend money on. And then, to say that there's this reserve account that we can just buy whatever, so, so maybe the voters said, you know what, we're not going to buy a rescue this year, last year we didn't buy a rescue, but then we turn around and get new carpets. I'm, I just, the process there makes me uncomfortable without some kind of justification from the voters, and authorization. But that, I just wanted to re-up my objection.
Okay.
Okay, so, you're off to bid. We're hoping to do the deal, and we have your opinion. And let's all make sure the Budget Committee understands where each of us stands.
I also just want to note for the record that I, I did do research, because statements were made, that there was a lot of minute backup on what intended purpose, the capital for intended purpose. I could not find any minute backup from the town council, having any discussion of this. And the only place I saw it, it came up on the Budget Committee as one of their resolutions, and it really didn't deal with that phrase. So, I just want to put that out there.
Maybe there'll be new resolutions that will clarify this.
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. President, I, I think if anything, this is an illustration of how there can be unforeseen expenditures, and that it would be helpful to be prepared for that, instead of not knowing what to do when they occur. I think that's the purpose, if I'm not mistaken, of this account.
Yes.
And, you know, certain unforeseen capital expenditures, I tend to think, or at least I would think, that fits within this. But, it's sort of, you know, we now, almost every day, run into things that have been unanticipated and more expensive than we would like. And we can't budget for all of that, I understand that. But I think having some cushion, or an account that provides a cushion, can actually be very practical.
Sounds quite reasonable. We're trying to hit every subject matter one can think of on the agenda tonight. We've gone through private investigators. Let's talk about K-9 units. Chief Jones, this was here before. Oh, who owns this one? Is it the solicitor's?
I'm going to ask that we actually postponed that, on behalf of the chief. I'm asking that. He was going to bring one of his officers to speak on this, and he's not available due to family circumstances, so if this could be moved to the next meeting.
You can unless you have an update that you think that we should hear now, or would you rather?
I'm, I'm fine either way. I think it's, it was, you asked me to do some, review the contract, which I've done, but I have to do that with the chief here to have more of a conversational.
Okay. Any objection? All right. I think that'll administratively pass off the agenda by consensus. We'll schedule it out, your pleasure. Okay. Okay, Counselor Hilton, proposed resolution and possible vote to grant the Recreation Commission authority for Grinnell's Beach and Stone Bridge Abutment. Over to you.
So, by ordinance, various recreation areas are assigned to various boards and commissions. However, so we don't have to do an ordinance, there's language in there, in the new version, which is not yet available online. You have to get a copy from Nancy. But, that basically says that any newly acquired, or new recreation or open space areas shall be designated to the correct authority by the town council. So, it seemed less expensive and simpler to do this as a resolution, rather than the expensive in ordinance for now. So, basically, this is a resolution that would assign responsibility for the, the shade sale area and park at the beach, as well as the abutment, to the Recreation Commission.
I have one question, that, and I truly don't know the answer to it. So, the, the shade area and the, and the Stone Bridge Abutment were town properties, correct, that then grants were given, I, I don't know, I'm asking.
Okay, so.
To improve them.
So, so, there are technically three properties down there.
Correct.
Although at some point, I think the beach and the gas station should have an administrative subdivision and become one.
There's the beach, the shade area, and the abutment.
And the abutment.
Correct.
So, the abutment was renovated in all up. It was about $2.6 million. The vast majority of it, about $2 million in federal funds.
Yep.
That came from some sort of America-the-beautiful-federal-highway program, and another half a million from the Rhode Island Department of Transportation, DOT. The beach, which, and the shade sale area, the gas station site, which is about a half a million dollar project, has been funded primarily through grant money, about $420,000 in grant money, the largest of which, which was $397,000, which came from DEM, but also grants from the Rhode Island Foundation and CRMC. And then, about another $50,000 in private donations, private cash donations, and then the remainder in donation of services and, and things from other generous.
Right.
Community-minded individuals, plus some sweat equity on the part of the committee and the DPW.
Okay, so, okay. And that, those grants are now completed. So, in other words, if we now make this part of the subject of the Recreation Commission, then it becomes part of the duty of the Recreation Committee, the maintenance and the upkeep. And was that, was that, was, was that what was going to be intended after the, after the project was done, that it would then be turned over? Was it going to be maintained by further grants? I guess that's my question.
No. The, the intention was, I mean, the beach has always been.
No, I understand. The beach is clear, yeah.
The intention was that from a programmatic point of view, in terms of events or activities and rules and regulations, that it would be under the purview of the Recreation Commission. As far as it being a town facility, it would fall under the DPW, you know, in terms of sort of, you know, just like any other sort of big facility does, just like Fogland Beach does, or any of the playgrounds, or anything like that.
And that was always the intent after.
That was, I mean, that was always the intent after that. Although, one of the things about all of the design down there, and everything that's been done down there on both sides, was, the idea was to make it as low maintenance as humanly possible, to choose materials that don't need to be painted, to things that aren't going to rust, like, so that it, it won't be a big, huge maintenance issue. But, you know, the lawn at the Dillboy Park's going to have to get mowed, just like it did before. You know, the, the beach will need to get dragged a couple times, just like it did before. I'm not sure the abutment is going to need a lot of maintenance, other than to maybe sweep the shells off of it, that the seagulls drop, but, you know.
Okay.
But that was always the.
That was just my question, whether the taxpayers were now going to be taking over something that they was not expecting. That's all.
No, that was always, that was always the plan.
Okay.
I just have another question, Trish. With the Recreation Commission, they're not, all the seats aren't filled. Are they capable of taking on more jobs to do? And also.
Do it now.
I don't know what anybody means by the Recreation Commission okaying different things going on down there, where maybe they should have to ask permission of the town council, if it's going to be, I mean, I'm not sure.
They actually, they actually, they actually do, in the larger ordinance that covers this, you know, they can set certain levels of rules down there, you know. And frankly, we've been working with them, or the Grinnell's Beach Committee has been working with them all the way along, and they've had a lot of input into this, and, you know, they've actually given us the rules list for the signs to be made. And so, I think that they're fully prepared to do this. But there is a requirement, as far as events down there and things that need special permits, those all have to be approved by the council. They don't get to do that. It's.
That's in another.
In and of themselves.
Good on legal on this? Okay. And I'm wondering with all the recitals, the actual resolution is quite brief. It would be, it is hereby resolved pursuant to Chapter 54 of the Tiverton Municipal Code, the Tiverton Recreation Commission be designated as the responsible commission for the Grinnell's Beach Pavilion and the Stone Bridge Abutment. This would be a resolution, not an ordinance, but since it's something in that area code, I just want to make sure. Is anybody from the public would like to be heard on this? Any further discussion? Floor is open. Do you have a motion?
Did you have? Oh, Jan, I think that's.
I just want to sort of emphasize the point that Councilwoman Hilton made about the distinction between programmatic responsibility and maintenance responsibility, because there can be confusion from time to time, as to who has to take care, for example, of the septic system, or, you know, certain maintenance requirements. And I think it would be good if the, the minutes could reflect that the intent is to have the commission deal with the programmatic responsibilities, subject to where the council needs to ultimately approve things, and that DPW is responsible for facility maintenance.
Any objection in the minutes, so stating? Okay. Sense a consensus to approve as presented. May I have a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the Tiverton Town Council Resolution to assign Recreation Commission authority for the Grinnell's Beach Pavilion and the Stone Bridge Abutment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Mr. Perry? Any opposed? Was that seven, was that seven oh? Were you with us? Okay.
On that, I, I do have one other thing that I would just like to throw out there to the council to consider. This came up in our most recent discussion with Recreation, which is, there's already a lot of interest in potentially having things on the abutment events, maybe like a, you know, food festival, or a chowder cook-off, or, you know, all kinds of great ideas. But we were discussing the name, because the abutment, I mean, we call it the abutment. We know what an abutment is. We know what it is. But if you're actually having something, and you would like to market it, and it says it's being held at the Stone Bridge Abutment, a lot of people go, you know, like.
Sounds half-tough.
Yeah, right? So, there was some discussion about potentially giving it a new name, and calling it the Stone Bridge Pier, or something that might sound a little more inviting, if there was to be an event there. Not that we have to make a decision, I'm just sort of throwing that out there. If somebody has an idea, and maybe I'll come back to the council if there's a good suggestion on potentially a, a better, nicer name than the abutment.
We should have a contest.
This is naming contests.
We should have a contest.
A corporate sponsorship opportunity for a million dollars a year, you two advertise on the, okay. All right, we're moving right along here. So, financial.
There you go.
There you go.
This is financial business. We're looking to add just over $7,000 to our software maintenance, software maintenance account, to be funded from five other accounts and smaller items. Who's our, want to speak for that? Chief?
So I've had some computer, additional computer issues, if you will. And like it says in the agenda, I'd like to move these little bits of money from these accounts to that, to my computer account. Right now, I have bills for just, just over $4,000 that are owed right now, I believe, I'm hoping. I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm hoping with the extra, I think it's roughly $3,700, that'll get me through the year, to, you know, to July, for any additional computer issues that might come up.
So is this unanticipated additional expense to the problem we resolved a month or two ago? Or is this something different?
Um, it's, it's not directly, it's not the, the big problem that we, we resolved a couple months ago. I think the issue was, at least as far as the fire department goes, it was a lot bigger than we thought it was. When they, when the computer company, Dave, started working with our computers in, in the stations, trying to be nice, the, the company that we had before, it was just, it was more of a.
Problem.
Mess than they had anticipated. So there was a lot of stuff that they had to do that wasn't really, it was specific for the fire department, not the, not the big emergency. They had sonic wall issues that they had to take care of. They had to identify and fix some failure points. We had a, we have a computer at the casino that we do our reports on. That was, they had to go there and get that up and running. That wasn't part of the, the emergency. The computers in car one and car three, they had to take care of. And there was some other stuff that I have no idea what the heck it meant. I am not a computer, computer guy, so.
If I can add a little to that in response to your question, I think it's fair to say that as we worked on the bigger sort of crisis there, the IT folks dove into, you know, this whole mysterious situation with computers and networks and everything else. And they discovered a lot of stuff, that on the one hand, a lot of it had to be resolved as part of fixing the bigger problem. But there were additional problems that they discovered that were not directly related to that, but nonetheless, you know, need to be addressed. So it was unanticipated. It was discovered as part of the work on the larger crisis, and unfortunately, it is once again, an expensive proposition, but it. and unfortunately, it is once again, an expensive proposition, but it, it deals with flaws in the computer and network system that could affect the performance of the department.
Totally. When you open up a wall to deal with a leak, and you see the electrical needs to be redone.
Correct, yeah.
I do just have one question. I don't think Bruce can answer this, maybe Denise or Jan. The equipment service contract, we're taking that out of, was that a set number that we actually do owe for the equipment service contracts? Like, is, is that account going to run short? Because usually, that's a specific number, because we know all the contracts, you know. Yeah, because I'm just worried, because that, that number's usually exactly what we owe these contracts.
That's what he has looked at, whether or not.
Is that what you looked at?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I believe the monies that we, I went through this with Judy.
Judy?
Yep. And I, we should be good with.
Okay.
Taking these.
No, I was just wondering, because that's usually a number that is actual. So, that's why I was.
I'll make a motion.
Floor's open. Open floor.
Is everyone all set?
Yeah.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make a motion to accept this budget request from the Acting Chief Rymals, as $7,075 for the fix of computer.
Second.
Any further discussion, comments, questions? Here are none. All those in favor?
Thank you very much. See you in a minute.
Thank you.
Okay, switching gears to admin. We've got several items here. We'll try to get through them as fast as we can. This is the last meeting of the first quarter of 2019. Turns out, we've had five meetings in the last quarter of 2018. This will be our 13th meeting, so this is our 18th meeting so far, with about four months on the job. And again, this is a non-binding document, but just trying to sketch out what the scheduling of agenda items might look like for the next quarter. So, April, May, June, it's not binding, but the idea here is to try to have a, a framework, so people can see what's coming and move things around as needed. Sent out a preliminary draft earlier in the week, and I got an updated draft I sent out Saturday. Fly to them really quick, there's not a, you know, a whole lot here, but again, it's just tentative, but starting off with Monday, April 8th, I think we have one of two hearings coming up on the CDBG, Church Community Grant Application. That looks like a formal public hearing. We may talk about, that's actually a question for Council Hilton, if he wanted more airtime on the department head templates. So, that'll, that's why that's in brackets. So, that's there. We have some items for executive session minutes, to release those minutes that have not been. Solicitor interviews and selections, we need to schedule that, more on that later in tonight's meeting. We need a public hearing on fines and fees. We will be working further detail on a legal services utilization policy in connection with solicitor services. We have, I believe it's been discussed at the last meeting, that Mr. Kennick from Wastewater has requested, and I've agreed to sponsor another session on wastewater issues on the town. I should also say too, that I, I meant to say this at the last meeting, that he and I had also discussed about possibly holding some kind of a public workshop, or just open town hall type of thing at the senior center at some point on Bay Street. Solar, on May 28th, six months will have gone by since we repealed the solar ordinance, if you can believe it's been that long, or will have been that long, so we need to talk about that. Board and commission interviews for Group B, that needs to happen this quarter. Bay Street, we'll be talking about more. We need to do something about the authority of the municipal courts, having to do with traffic issues and charter, alleged charter violations. And then, of course, unassigned, obviously a number of collect bargain issues that are there. There's some quarry licensing that I guess we need to clean up. That hasn't been, and then the parks, recreation, playgrounds. So, that's just, that's just a list of me and some of the agenda team. And if you have others that you'd like to see on here, just please let us know, and we'll try to squeeze it in. Code of Employee Conduct, okay, that's right.
Can I ask a kind of administrative question? I know we do email through a Google account, and we're looking to move to Microsoft 360, just generally in a town. Do we have somewhere a cloud drive that we could put this kind of thing on, and we could restrict access to?
I would like that, and it's related to the question that I wanted to ask, what exactly the role of this document is going to be, because I find myself requesting multiple times that something goes on the agenda, and it goes into a folder, not necessarily on this. So, maybe we can, not here necessarily, but clarify as to when things actually get added to this, because there's certainly a whole lot more items that I can say are waiting to be, you know, on the agenda, but we sort of have parallel processes going on. And one thing that might solve that is a cloud-based document, but even then, you sort of have to decide who actually edits, gets to edit the document.
We should be able to give various permissions to various people.
Okay, so that's all that is. And again, this is a working draft. Anybody's, feel free to add to it. It's not binding. Next is the, are the liaisons.
Rob, could we say these out loud, so people know who's liaison to?
Will, yeah, and I.
If I decide to be on one, can I indicate now?
I was, but before we do that, I.
I did know, notice you're not on any, Nancy.
I did notice you're not on any.
We were going to solve that problem.
She was thinking about it.
I just, I was holding this up to the Boards and Commissions' policy, which is, I think, next on the agenda, and, not to mix things up a little bit, but the Boards and Commissions' policy, which was adopted by the council in 2012, and is, looks like been amended maybe one time, might be amended again tonight, basically, the structure's been consistent, and it views, it tries to group, and just administratively, the Boards and Commissions into three groups, sort of an A, B, C, and try to take them quarter by quarter. And so, I just wanted to make sure that we had all of them on both of these lists. So, the couple on the Boards' policy that was not on the liaison list, the Building Code Board of Review, the Housing Authority, the Juvenile Hearing Board, and the Tax Assessment Board of Review, and if those are, if those are still, and I think they are, those sounded like great boards to sign the Council Driggs.
And add them to the liaison.
Which one?
The leftovers.
And I didn't know if, if there were, were any other, what I'll call standing ad hoc committees. So, those are ones that aren't necessarily in the charter, or they're not required by state law, like a library board, but the recycling committee comes to mind, and the historic preservation.
Or recycling. Recycling's on here.
Yeah. Are there any others besides those two? Do we have all the sort of standing committees that are not temporary, but they're not in the charter?
Well, because I don't think that exists once it's done.
That will eventually end.
Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we have all. So, is there any objection to adding those four, Building Code, Housing, Juvenile Hearing, and Tax Assessment to the liaison list?
Building Code.
We've never had a juvenile hearing, when I think.
We can.
I don't want to leave anybody out.
Juvenile Hearing?
That's a good one.
So, are there any others?
I'll be glad to, I don't know, I've never, and what was the last one? Building, Housing, Juvenile Hearing, what?
Well, Tax Assessment, I mean, I don't, I don't know that there's a lot of policy grounds there, but I do think it's important that there's at least somebody that.
Oh, the Tax Assessment Board of Review.
No, no, I'll be glad, I don't know, but I was going to say, if, unless Justin really wants the Arts Commission, I'd be, I'd, I'd like to do the Arts Commission.
You have to have more than one, too.
Enough, two people.
So, it's totally fine.
And unless, and Rob, I'll do the Harbor and Coastal with you, or just myself. And I don't know, I'll look into juvenile hearing, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
You can take me up those, I just jumped on, because.
Because no one else had it.
Okay, so.
I'll take Building Code and Housing.
Okay, and I can take Tax.
I'll take all the money. I'll take all the money.
Historical Cemetery, Justin.
No, I'll take all the money.
Okay.
Historical Cemetery, Justin has.
I'll give that up.
Well, Justin has it, but if you want it, he's going to give it up.
Okay, so, if I have this right, compared to the draft that was out in the packet, well, I'll just take it from the top, how about that? Arts will be cats, budget is Colter.
No, wait.
I'm sorry, Driggs, if I can't screw that up right out of the gate.
Okay, go ahead, Rob.
Arts is Council Driggs, budget is Colter, canvassing is Council DiMaderos, cemetery, Council Perry. You still have cemetery, not to be confused with historical cemetery.
And Recreation.
Conservation, Council Hilton, EDC, Economic, cats, Harbor and Coastal is now.
Nancy.
I'll do that.
Even Nancy.
Nancy.
Council Colter, are you moving?
Yeah. I know, we didn't ask you this.
That's fine.
I agree. I agree.
I agree. I apologize.
Who took historical cemetery?
Donna.
Okay. Historical Preservation, Cook, Landfill Recycling, Council Hilton, Library, Council DiMaderos, Chamber of Commerce, that's not a board, but it's on the list, I'll take it. Open Space, Council Hilton, Personnel, DiMaderos, Planning Board, Hilton, Police Pension Board, Cats, Recreation, Mr. Perry, School Committee, Council DiMaderos, Tree Commission, Colter, Zoning, Council Hilton, Building Code, Board of Review, Cats, Housing, who took Housing? Okay, Cats, Juvenile Hearing Board, Driggs, and the Tax Assessment Board of Review is. I think I took that one. Non-binding, just another way to get in touch with us. All right, liaison. And we don't think there's any other ad hocs that are sort of permanent.
I'll think more about it, but I don't.
Okay, all right, great. Moving right along. Speaking of Boards and Commissions, we have proposed for an amendment. I, I think I mentioned this once or twice, maybe back in December or January. There have been solicitations for input. I have incorporated the input that I received, which was only from two councils, and all that we've done here, let me just fly through it. We've added the, well, it's in brackets, assuming we all agree to this, clarified that this policy only applies to unelected boards, not elected boards. We added in Group A the Historical Preservation Advisory Board, even that's an ad hoc committee, added the Charter Review Commission along, next to the Budget Committee and the School Committee as elected bodies, some kind of typos and cleanup, and added clarity that the Town Council cannot delegate its responsibilities to do appointments where it has that authority, and boards are discouraged from conducting their own interviews, commenting upon, or otherwise vetting candidates unless requested by the full council.
I have a question.
Sort of substantive.
I have a question for that. Instead of that reading, I'm not even sure I agree with this whole statement, but instead of that reading requested by the full Town Council, why doesn't it say the majority of the Town Council? Because very seldom is it a 7-0 vote. It says full Town Council, which implies seven of us would have to agree.
A majority.
And then, and we'll come back to debate the changes, but just to make sure that, just fly through some of the things that did not change. Again, I spoke to this concept of dividing the Boards into three quarters, thinking of it in that way. The goal here is to try to be efficient. Liaisons, we just talked about. The idea with these Boards is theoretically, and I don't know that we're quite at perfection yet, but to, to the public comment, the Boards are requested to put annual reports in, in the first month of their quarter, so that everybody can take a look and see what, you know, what's an annual report, what have they been doing, what's on their mind, open issues, big concerns, things that they're worried about. That would also be a great opportunity to, if there are candidates that you're looking for specific needs, we've heard a lot about grant writing, what a great place to put that would be in the annual report. That would be the first step, and then we proceed into an interview process. So, I don't know that we followed this perfectly, and that all Boards are sending an annual reports, but to Ms. Melatiere's request, that's actually already the policy. So, hopefully, we can strive to that. I know, I think I saw excellent annual report from Planning Board.
Yeah, in the past, some, some do adhere to it, some don't.
So, so, for example, in a, in a perfect world, Group B, which, which is Building Code Board of Review, Economic Development, Harbor Coastal, Planning Board and Zoning Board of Review, those five bodies, in the month of April would give an annual report. In the month of May, we would advertise for open positions and renewals, and in June, we do the appointments. So, there's some type of, you know, rhythm to it, and we spread out the work, and hopefully, it has some efficiency. So, that, there's no changes to, to that. No real changes to the application process, or really, the interview process. I'll stop talking. Any questions?
I actually have a few.
Is it, is it appropriate to move the?
Let, let Tricia have it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, on the reporting thing, which we've had for a while, and, and there are a very small number of Boards who actually do a report, and since I'm a liaison to a number of them, I'll tell you, most of the Boards hate that requirement. They're volunteers, it's a project to do a report, they feel, you know, that they've got to, some of them get really worried about it, and the next thing you know, you've got 37 PowerPoint slides. And, you know, others of them sort of stall and stall and stall, because, you know, they're uncomfortable coming forward and giving a report, and, and they don't want to do it. And, and, you know, these folks are volunteers, and they're doing a tremendous amount of work. I actually think that, because we get their minutes, so, you know, we know what they're doing, and, you know, they submit minutes, we, we know what is going on. I think it would be more helpful at the end of the year, maybe sort of in the November timeframe, to ask them for two things. A bulleted list of what their priorities for next year are, because that's one thing we often don't know. I mean, you know, they may be doing something that may be something that we think is a good priority, or they may be off doing something that, that the council might say, ooh, you know, maybe hold off a year on that. So, just get a bulleted list of, you know, do you have any big goals or objectives or priorities for this year, and then get a list of, you know, what are like your five biggest challenges before the budget season, you know, before, you know, it's too late for us to really be able to help them. And I think that if you ask them to do that, which is a much smaller amount of work and a lot less pressure, that you would get that. But getting these reports is really difficult, and I am completely sympathetic as to why, because.
My only comment on that is that I think for each group, the structure of this, as Rob said, has A, B, and C groups, and they actually, their terms start at different times of the year, and I think the intent was to have something available for people to look at, to decide whether they want to apply to fill a vacancy, et cetera. So, instead of having every group November, maybe, I think it's a good idea, but maybe instead of, like, Group A would have to have their report in by, that, that bullet thing in by March, and you'd know which group your thing is, because they name them. And then, do you see what I'm saying?
I, I do. I was only suggesting, I mean, they, I mean, they're, they exist all year long, right, and, and.
But the appointments come at scattered times.
They do, sort of, but the appointments also get a little out of whack, because people sometimes resign not at the end of their term, and so.
Right, but their regular term.
I, I was more talking about, I mean, I think I'm fine with the appointments part, trying to keep those in sort of blocks, if that makes sense. I was just saying, the idea of asking them all to submit, to come to us with annual reports, you know, rather ask them to give us a bulleted list of next year's priorities and things you want to work on, and next year's challenges, but to do it, and I guess you could start it anytime in the summertime, but to start it before the budget season, so if somebody, if a board of commission has a really good idea to do something, that we say, wow, that's great, you should do it, but they need funding for it, we know about that before budget season starts, you know, even if they need an extra $500 or $700 to be able to do it. It would be good if we knew early on, not later.
If you're going to do it at one point, I'm going to suggest that November not be the time, because that's a change of councils, and this is going to fall through the cracks there. And I can't be chasing boards.
Why not January, worst of the year, where we're doing the budget? Like, January.
But November's not a good time.
My only take on this is even on one, if you read the policy, it's verbal or written, and it says summary report. So it could literally be one piece of paper that could have those bullet points. So I would find that most helpful. And there's more to what boards do than just budgets. In fact, the policy recommendations are perhaps even more important. So to me, I'd want that information as fresh as possible before the appointment process.
I agree.
But, and I'm also happy to change it from expected to encouraged, so that there's a little more wiggle room. More into, more into, you know. But I don't know, I think if, you know, you serve on a board for a year, coming up with a one-page list of what's on your mind, what are your priorities, is probably not a big ask. We'll also have to then read all 20 reports at the same time, which maybe that's a good thing, too. There was actually one of Ms. Pelletier's suggestions, if I understood it, was almost sort of a uber board conference of all, of all committee chairs, or something like that. I probably think that's, the town administrators are cool to coordinate all that, but in that spirit, it wouldn't be a bad thing to get them all at one time. So, okay. Any other? Any other?
I just wanted to make sure. I sent an email last week, and I don't know if that was reviewed. I don't want to go through them if it's already been looked at, but...
Who'd you send the email?
Just to the clerk, and Mr. Coulter and Ms. Katz, subsequent to our, I believe it was our prep call. And they're very minor, I think they're minor issues, and really just some questions. I think one was just addressed, it's the, I'm not, again, this is my being new here. Do any of these boards and commissions manage their own accounts? So there's no need for financial reporting?
Yeah, they do. They do manage their own accounts. If they have a budget, some of them don't have budgets, but, like, the recreation manages their accounts.
But is that, is that the town treasurer that manages it? Or is it, they put requests in? No one?
They request it from them.
No one has their own?
No one has their own checkbook.
Nobody has their own treasurer.
Yeah, okay, all right. And then, do any of them maintain separate insurance policies from the town? I had a couple of...
Just not to interrupt, but does this draft, just to make sure I have the right one, there was the one that made it, the pack a deadline, and then the updates that I sent Saturday. Are both of those in front of us here?
Which one is this, with the blue?
It didn't send the boards and commission updates that day, something Friday, I mean, Thursday, or the past, or Friday morning, when we got them in the pack.
There is two here.
The ones in the terrace.
One's the clean, and one's the blue.
Edit?
Sure.
Because I... I didn't see any of the changes responsive to that email, so...
Freshest draft, though.
So, what we have in front of us, is this the most updated?
It is.
It is?
You know, it is not, because, for example, footnote one, what says pending legal review, I struck that. So, so some of the, because it got a legal review.
So where is the last copy?
That did not get printed out.
Nancy.
Wait a minute. This is what I had. I have four of them. I don't recall having any other one, but if you did...
You have four what?
You sure you sent it? I don't...
Okay.
Do you have it on your?
If I took my computer out, would that make you have to give my whole hard drive?
No, no, I mean, he might have it on his if you sent it to me.
So when did you send it, Rob?
That's Saturday, no, I sent it to...
I know, you have your solicitor one from there, I have your updated quarterly meeting one. And I don't have, I didn't, this I just over...
So I wouldn't suggest we adopt it tonight. There were some technical grammar things, and I tried to address the budget. I did not know that, I don't believe anybody has separate insurance carrier policies.
They don't. They don't. Does the zoning of planning, do the zoning of planning, they have separate insurance policies?
So, Section 4, I just thought it required the word unless, sorry, on the final line. Section 4, this is page 2 of 9 on the markup copy. Unless other authority applies or otherwise instructed, I just thought it should say, or unless otherwise instructed, just for grammar purposes.
Which page?
Oh, I see, okay.
Page 2 of 9.
Page 2 of 9, Section 4, the third line.
Or unless otherwise instructed.
That's not my Section 4, 2 of 9 page.
Is yours different? No, you've got it.
I'm on the markup copy, if that's all. The blue line.
We should do it.
Yeah, I was really just kind of grammar.
Section 8, I was suggesting to remove the phrase as applicable at the start.
Yeah.
And I think it's applicable to all the boards, I would assume.
I thought that was a little weird, too. And does that follow all the way through? Because there's other as applicable, there's as applicable in the first sentence, as applicable in the second sentence.
My only issue is that I don't know that each and every single board does actually have its own budget. Maybe they do, but does every single board have a budget? So that's...
It's not required.
Or have its own property.
Yeah, Planning Board has a budget.
Every board has a budget.
No. The Planning Board definitely does. They have supplies and material.
Juvenile doesn't have any.
No, Juvenile doesn't.
Not every board has it.
Cemetery?
Cemetery has it.
Most of them do.
I just didn't want to leave confusion. If it's not accurate, that's fine.
No, that's fine.
And then in the second line, the word town at the end of the second line, all property under its care. So I would assume at certain points, there might be boards that would have property that wasn't town property, whether it was state property, or private property, or what have you. I think it should all be accounted for, one way or the other. So the word town might be superfluous. Section 11, at the bottom of page 4, I just thought that should be public records requests, plural, again, very minor. And then in 12C, I just didn't know if you wanted to continue to require newspaper notice. I know a lot of public bodies are sticking with electronic notices and online notices, and that's an expense that a lot of towns are moving away from.
Yeah, that I left in brackets, because I didn't know what the pleasure of the council would be on that.
So, so just on the town's website, you're suggesting?
I would say more than...
And get rid of the newspaper of local circulation?
Well, I think you have to do more than a web, the town's website, to get interest. There might be another way, but a lot of people don't look at the town.
Twitter will pay for it.
Yeah, but this is for public notice for boards that have upcoming...
They don't have a newspaper unless they go on the website. I think that might create more chasing after people, because they're not going on the website to find out that they...
Well, not only that, but people sitting at home, who might be interested, may not look at the website, so...
What are the other towns doing? What are the other towns doing that they're getting away from it? How do they have it? Is it a law?
No.
No. No, it's just a way to get people to know there's openings.
Yeah, but a lot of people don't even get the news.
Put it on Facebook, anybody seems to see that.
I think, I think the search, just kind of throwing it out on the table, it wasn't a strong recommendation. When in doubt, I think we should probably leave it in. Does anybody have a strong feeling?
Okay.
Yeah, we could put, instead of saying it has to be in a newspaper, we could put, could be, you know what I mean, so that...
If I have the emails, like, the email letter?
Yeah, so, sometimes in the papers, there's a section that I don't think costs money to submit things under sort of like, community news. So rather than the expensive advertising, could we not try and submit it as, you know, Town of Tiverton has plenty of openings on these, like, I mean, those are sort of free community announcements in a lot of newspapers. Frankly, more people probably read those than they read the little public legal notices in the back. Tom's smiling, so I think that means yes. Marcia's not looking up, though.
I think the cable, the public cable, also has community announcements, too, you know. A lot of people watch these town meetings, and they do have a community announcement board, so you could check with, I don't know if Brian still runs it, but...
And, you know, the other thing for the, there are a lot of people who come in and out of this building all day, every day. I mean, you could always just put on the wallpaper, one of the easels over there, you know?
We have openings.
We have openings. I mean, bazillion people who come in and out of here every day.
Especially at tax time.
It does say at a minimum, so I would, I would agree to strike that phrase, and once in the newspaper of local circulation. We can always do it if we want to.
Right. Don't put it as a requirement, if we think of other ways to save the money and get the word out. I wouldn't put it as a requirement.
If you want a job, I'm going to send it back to the town, and then you can...
We could make a nice community board.
All right, so here's my question. These to me were minor grammatical, so happy to vote on this now, or I'm happy to turn this into a final document and let you take another chop at it. Does anybody have a strong feeling?
Yeah, as long as, do you all agree that in G, interview and selection, we put requested by the majority of the Town Council, instead of by the full Town Council?
Yeah. I move we vote on it now.
Okay.
With the majority, majority Town Council and the...
Other changes.
Can we, is there a room for compromise on changing the requirement to a, on the summary?
What are you looking at?
The reporting. Encouraged to? We change expected to encourage and leave as is? Yeah, that works. Then it's not a fixed requirement.
Yeah. It's encouraged, I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right, so if this passes, then there'll be a final form. You'll all see it. If you think that something is incorrect, if you understand, we'll put it back on the agenda and take another chop at it. Is that good?
Yep.
And can that be done subject to a final just grammatical review, scrivener's review, so without further authority necessary?
We're really good at that. But if you put it on the consent agenda, it will come off. All right, will there be a motion?
I moved.
Second? Okay, any further discussion, questions, comments? Apologies in favor? Opposed? Yeah, thank you. All right, next up, same drill. It looks like you don't have the absolute latest draft, which clears the word legal. So let me talk through the documents in front of you, and then we will go back. Actually...
Are we looking at the governance post?
I'm sorry, that's where we're headed. And I wanted to offer Ms. Diane Farnworth, did you, if you'd like to speak now?
She's coming.
Want to speak out?
Hi, Diane Farnworth, 95, Pecassadav. Good evening. I'm Diane Farnworth, and I'm also the Vice Chair of the Tiverton School Committee. My remarks in this forum, however, are my own, and do not necessarily represent the views of the entire school committee. I am here to speak briefly on this council's proposed changes to its governance policy, specifically Section 7B, actions by councilors. To quote the current policy, no counselor may hold himself or herself out as an agent of the entire Town Council, nor act or purport to act as an agent on behalf of the Town Council, unless duly authorized to do so by prior authorization by an affirmative vote of the Town Council. Town Council Vice President Justin Katz has now twice held private meetings with Tiverton School Superintendent Dr. Peter Senkioni. He purports to be meeting as a private citizen, but his Town Council hat cannot be removed and replaced as he sees fit. It is a fact that on March 6, 2019, the Tiverton Town Council, by a vote of 4 to 2, adopted a fiscal 2020 budget proposal to be forwarded to the Budget Committee. Within this document was a proposed school department budget, which happens to be the same budget that Vice President Katz proposed to the superintendent during their first meeting. It is therefore indisputable that Mr. Katz was indeed representing the four-member majority of the Town Council during these private meetings. Mr. Katz states that he is seeking compromise. Only these meetings are not being held with the actual elected officials that can approve that compromise. Namely, the elected school and budget committees are the only elected bodies charged with formulating, debating, and presenting to voters a proposed budget for the Tiverton School Department. If the Town Council seeks compromise, then those discussions should be out in the open, not behind closed doors, and with the appropriate elected officials present and represented. It is my hope that as you review your governance policy this evening, that you keep Section 7B, actions by councilors, as is, and that you also choose to enforce compliance to its words and spirit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll definitely come back to that. So what I'll, what I'll do here is I will walk through, again, this was circulated at least twice over the last three months. I have received comments from two counselors and others, but two counselors, and attempted to incorporate that. And then the agenda prep team also saw this document, and the council editor gave some feedback, which was updated in part on a Saturday draft, which looks like you don't have. So we'll do the same drill. I'll go through my thing, we'll let Geos have a say, and then we can decide what we want to do from there. First of all, on Section 2B, there was some existing language that seemed to suggest there could be provisional votes at a Town Council work session. I put that in brackets, because I wasn't particularly comfortable with that. I don't know that you can take provisional votes. I guess it's provisional, so that's fine. I left that in brackets just to run by all of you. Some of this is just sort of typographic, I wouldn't say controversial. 3A makes clear that the meeting moderator can designate the Vice President, that happens all the time. Speaking by members of the public added clarity that there are at least four ways that the public will have the right to speak. One is at a, any public hearings, open forum designations, otherwise designated on the agenda, or whenever invited to do so by the moderating person, the President. This would change the, if that happens, it would change the guaranteed time from three minutes to two. But also make clear that if we run out of time, then the people that were looking to speak would be, have priority at the next opportunity to do so. Yep?
Can we ask questions now about?
Whatever you'd like. Yeah, sure.
Because I may forget as we go along. I'm not really understanding this. So is this implying that if we have an executive session at a regular Town Council meeting, then there won't be an open forum?
Right. Not necessarily. If there's agenda time, then I think the agenda team would schedule one, but there's no guarantee of one.
But we always have, in my six, seven years, I don't remember one meeting, or maybe one or two, that we didn't have an executive session. So this is really eliminating the public forum, then?
That's not my goal. My goal is to reduce executive sessions.
Well, I know, but... Oh, but even so, there's all, there's several reasons to have executive sessions, and to minimize the time we spend in there is a good goal, but, but what we're saying here is that if we have executive sessions, then the public forum may be eliminated.
For that meeting only.
But, but that's still...
But since we have executive sessions at every meeting, that sort of eliminates the public forum.
It kind of eliminates the public forum, and I think, I cannot agree with this at all, because I think the public has every right to speak to us every other week if they want to. And I really think, like you said, I think it's more important to listen to them and minimize the time we spend in executive and not spend so long there. But I totally don't agree with, with... But I totally don't agree with, with this, because it could be the, this could, the public forum could be eliminated every meeting because of that. And our agendas are long, and, but I think the, the public forum is a real important part of this, of the meetings. So I just, that's what I didn't understand about this. So that we really are eliminating the public forum from a lot of meetings.
Not necessarily.
But that's what it says.
No, it doesn't. But we can act clarity if you'd like. But again, I guess we'll debate this as we go, but the thrust here and the feedback that we're getting from a lot of different people is the meetings are long, they're inefficient, and we can't have a situation where meeting after meeting, we don't actually get to the town, you know, agenda business until, you know, 8:30 at night. So there needs to be ways to make that more efficient. So the meetings, we'll still have open forum, but they either need to be scheduled when we know there's agenda time, or they need to be at meetings where we don't have executive sessions that we're here till midnight trying to do that important work. And we need to have some clarity about priority of speakers, so that if we have a situation where 44 people show up and they want to speak for three minutes, you know, it's, as a right in the meeting, the people's business doesn't actually start until 10 at night. That's the balance we're trying to strike. And I think, again, we can also control, and we should control, and I'm of the opinion that a lot of these executive sessions should be held at special meetings, so that we're not tying up the regular, the regular meetings with them.
But usually, a public forum does not last forever.
Yeah, but Denise, the public forum, in a lot of instances, has turned into where one person's speaking for an hour and that sort of thing. And it's, it's not a three-minute, and it turns into, I'm sorry. It turns, I know what you're saying, but it turns into where they actually probably should have put in a request to be on the agenda. And that, that's, that's what I find the problem in. And then we're, we're here till 1 o'clock in the morning, because we didn't even get to town business till 8:30, and we're here for town business. And I am very much for the open forum, I like it very, very much. But as I was told a long time ago, when I didn't understand town meetings and, you know, what the open forum was about, I was told by a very wise person that the town council meeting was for town council business. And that's what it's about. To allow open forums is very nice, but we either need to keep it at two minutes where someone says, "I'd like such-and-such done," or "Could you, could you please?" But it's really turned into that they really should have put a request in for, to be on the agenda, and it's a very long open forum. I don't think that's right either. It's not fair to us, either.
Well, I don't think it's the open forum you're referring to. The public hearings turn into sometimes like two hours.
Well, it's not a hearing, that's not a hearing.
But the sign-up public forums, I don't remember that lasting an hour. The public hearings definitely have, have lasted. But we are legally, we have to do public hearings on certain subjects.
I think the public forum has nothing to do with a public hearing.
Well, what they sign up for, you've seen that last two hours?
Yeah, I know, the library appointment, there was something. We were here an hour.
But, but, yeah, but that ended up going into, the topic was on the agenda.
I don't know where the happy medium is, but it's, it's getting kind of abuses where we're here till 1 o'clock in the morning. I think it's not fair that you're sitting for seven and eight hours, and you don't even get to the town business. I don't know what the happy medium is here, but if it's going to be something short, that's fine, but they, and it ends up being very, very long, and like, you don't even start anything till 8 o'clock.
Well, I...
They should have been on the agenda, they should have made a request.
If it's something that pertains to the agenda for that night, I think they should be allowed. But if it's something that doesn't, maybe there's some way we can have them register, put in a request for the next meeting that's not so, so many items, so many things to discuss.
Correct.
But if it's something pertaining to our agenda for that night, I think they should be allowed.
And that was the library, the library did pertain to that agenda that night.
And that was a long...
Well, that was, that was just...
My recollection of the history of this is some 10, 15 years ago, people were able to come up and speak on agenda items as they came up, and one of the councils didn't like that practice, and ended that, and moved it to a public forum at the end of the meeting, I think, and then that moved to the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, that did work at the end.
But, but to me, that was, that was a more restrictive way of doing public commentary. So I mean, maybe it needs clarification that there's more of an implied right to speak on agenda items, but that's the way that makes the most sense to me, is people can have a right to speak when, when a subject is under consideration, and if they want to bring up a topic that's not on the agenda, then you submit a request form. But the, but both of those are getting away from the idea that there's just a signup sheet, and it's just, hey, we're, we're giving you somewhere to talk on any subject you want at the beginning of every meeting. And I, I can agree, and I think it's, it's actually ends up being more respectful of the public and more transparent if they can speak when the subject is up, or get an agenda item, or otherwise we're doing the business that other people have come to observe. I think that would be the happy medium there.
But Justin, how does that solve the problem of Donna bringing up that library night? We were talking about the library, it was an agenda.
Then you limit the time.
Limit the time.
Right, but also, you know...
But you will still have the 50s.
But if it's on the agenda, you know in advance, and we're trying to get better about planning our meetings, so that if we know something's going to be really long, maybe we don't have two of those on the same agenda or something like that. But I think the, the policy of the open forum is, you don't know what's going to come up, really, and that, that can be problematic. And I, there may be additional language, but I'm not sure that keeping the open forum is the solution.
I, I am, I'm opposed to getting rid of the, of the public forum. I, you know, I, I think if we have to learn to be more efficient in our work, maybe we all need to learn to talk less, including myself, and listen more, but I think it's our job to listen to the citizens, and I think that the public forum has been very useful and very helpful. I will say one difference between this council and prior councils, however, is that the public forum is used for citizens to make comments only. It has never been to go down the road of discussion. And I have seen on many occasions in this newer council where a citizen has gotten up to use the public forum to say something, and then people feel compelled to respond, and the next thing you know, it is, is turning into a big discussion. That was not the point. I also think that there are many people who sign up for the public forum because it's not clear to them that they'll be allowed to speak under an agenda item. Technically, if it's not listed as a public hearing, it's not clear. So sometimes people just sign up because, you know, they want to speak on a topic on the agenda, and they're not sure they get the opportunity to do it otherwise. But, you know, I'm opposed to it. I, I'm very concerned about this language that says, you know, "We're not going to have a public forum if there's an executive session," because we have an executive session every minute, every meeting. I do think that, you know, you can limit things. I don't think three minutes is too long, and most people don't speak for three minutes. But if you want the public forum to be more efficient, we need to actually use it the way that it was intended, which is, this is not an agenda item, we shouldn't be having a discussion on it, it, we should only be listening, and, you know, if there's something that we need to get back to somebody about, we can do it. But I'm not for anything that limits public participation in any way, shape, or form at the meetings.
Okay, so just my summary view on this is, and I, 10 years I've been watching, I have allowed, just as I did when I was on the Charter Review Commission, chaired that as well, allowed public comment on almost every single item. So I'm happy to continue that practice, but I have not seen prior town councils give that opportunity to everybody. So I think we need to be very clear about that. I would rather that the public get to speak during debate at the relevant agenda item instead of what I think we are seeing from time to time, which is sort of a parade of people saying the same thing over again that we're not able to, to talk to. So participation kind of goes two ways, right? If you come to a meeting and it turns out you don't get to have your business heard until 10 at night, because 43 people talk for three minutes on the same thing over and over again, that actually hurts transparency and participation. So, so why don't we go through this, we'll come back to this. There might be a way that we can handle this, which is a future proposal, just a proposal to schedule time for debate, and then just make it clear that the practice that I'm following is one you're all comfortable with, which is that everybody can speak at every meeting on every item. But you're going to have longer meetings, you'll risk some longer meetings then. Remember, if you want to get in touch with the council, too, you can write to the council, you can request time for an agenda, there are other, there are other ways as well. Okay. More on that in a little bit. Okay, so this draft would change the length of the meetings from being a target of three and a half hours to three hours, and if there's an executive session, the open session would be two hours and not three hours. This would make clear that the clerk does not need to keep as, you know, transcripts of every, of minutes when we know that the, the meetings are videotaped and audiotaped, which I think you do a fantastic job of keeping the minutes, but I think it just takes note that if the meeting is audiotaped or videotaped by the public, that that's also available. This draft would change the nominal target back one day for agenda requests from Tuesday to Monday on regular meetings. The agenda prep team meets on Tuesdays as it is, and the clerk and her team need time to get the packs together, so that moves it back one day.
Mr. President, can I just ask you to clarify? I, back on the minutes, when you said it's being recorded by the public, you mean by the town, not by a member of the public?
I'm sorry, the official, yeah, I'm sorry. Officially.
Officially, yeah.
Again, okay, so agendas. This is a, this is a change. This change would say, when you put an agenda request in, you need to start putting in requests and estimates of how much agenda time that you want. I'm not saying it's binding, but, you know, we often come to these where we don't know if an item's going to be five minutes or an hour, and it's hard to know how to schedule these things or how long it's going to be. So in, in connection with that is this idea that if you're going to bring something up for extended debate, it would be helpful if you could give a preliminary introduction ahead of time, so that people are not walking to the meetings for the first time, coming up to speed and studying on this. So if you want to put something on the agenda, you have to tell the agenda team what you're looking for, five minutes, an hour. We won't strictly hold you to it, but it really helps with the scheduling. And that's kind of my point. If we have in a meeting, and this, and the agenda requests are only adding up to an hour, then we put the open forum back in there. Of course, we have a meeting, and we start to spill into two, three hours, and in addition, the town administrator, I think, would like, and I would agree, to have some time reserved for things that pop up from time to time. We also need to save some time for consent agenda items. So that is a, that is a change that I strongly encourage. And the other, one other change would be that for consent agenda items, if you remove something from the consent agenda, that will go to the end of the meeting. Again, this is this idea that we have these consent agendas. Today wasn't too bad, but we have 27 items on the consent agenda. A third of them get pulled for discussion, 10 people sign up for the open forum. We have a couple licensing hearings, and before you know it, it's 9:30 at night before we've gotten to the first order of unfinished business. So that, that, that's a change.
I have a question with that. So if we pull from the consent agenda and you're putting it at the end, and then it goes over two hours or three hours, then we're never been, then we're not heard with the consent agenda that we pull?
Unless the majority moves it. The majority can always move the agenda around, but that would be the default.
But then, but then those items on the consent agenda may never be approved, because we've pulled them.
That's right.
And then they'll just, and it might be stuff that really needs to be done.
In fact, there could be other agenda items that needs to get done, but if we don't impose some discipline on ourselves, then it, we're going to have to schedule more meetings. This biases towards more meetings.
Well, then maybe we need to schedule more meetings, because I don't see that we're going to get anything, we're not going to get the business done if we do it this way.
But I also think, and I admit I'm a little wordy, we can move faster. I mean, this council has a, and Yan is nodding yes. This council has a very slow rhythm to it, it does. I'm just saying, we can pick up the pace, too.
Look how long it's taken us, and we're not even halfway through.
Well, the, the good news is that you can adopt this policy, do exactly what you're saying, and then nothing, and then everything will be fine. Right? We'll get to all the items, just still have open forum.
I don't think we can get the, well, whatever, it doesn't matter.
I completely, you know, caused it to go backwards now. On that note, on page five, I know this was not a highlighted item, but we went past that, and I wanted to make sure that I made a point that the clerk just raised, which is in, page five, I believe it's Section 4A, and the paragraph, two-thirds of the way down, begins, "The agenda shall normally be finalized." So the second full paragraph.
Okay, the agenda shall normally, okay.
Be finalized by 4:00 PM on the Wednesday before. I think, given the current state of the open meetings law, the second clause there is, is, should be stric, stricken, should be removed. The, I think that you have to notice that, the Monday holiday meetings, the day before anyways, so I think you end up with the same notice date. So I think you can strike from and on through the end of that sentence is a holiday.
Okay, almost there. And then we'll go back through. This makes clear that staff is not expected to attend special workshops and meetings unless you request it. Still request it, just want to add clarity that you don't have to add our special staff here for every single, you know, special meeting. This removes the sentence about the council president inviting people, I don't think that sentence is necessary. 7B, which we had a comment from, still keeps the language of not holding yourself out as an agent of the town council, it just says unless duly authorized by the town council or other authority.
Yeah, I want to know what other authority would authorize a council to go out on his own. What, what other authority is there besides?
You know, something that came to mind is...
Yeah, God, maybe. I'm not quite sure who would authorize it other than us.
Yeah, some state law or some charter document.
I don't think that there's a state law that says it, anybody...
There are sections of the charter that refer to things the town council president can do on his own, and that sort of thing, so...
I believe there are emergency provisions that, that allow...
Well, yeah, the town council president can do certain things, and it's all ringed by the charter. So instead of our other authority put, or otherwise stated in the charter, or duties stated in the charter or something, instead of putting other authority, because if the authority would be the charter, then just put, put it there.
Well, if there's authority, then there's authority, right? So is it this sort of...
I don't think there's any state law that says an elected body, one person can go out on their own and make decisions. I don't, I don't think so.
All the state law gives the power to the body, not to...
Right, it's the body, and then the charter specifically says what the president's allowed to do, and then meet with the council at the next meeting and discuss it. I mean, it's, it's the president that really has the authority in the charter to go out on their own in an emergency situation. And I know that.
That seems like a point we can...
So if we just put something about a charter, or otherwise stated in the charter, or whatever, think of something Geo...
I don't want to nimp it. I mean, if there's other authority, then it, then it's going to trump this policy anyway. So I would just strike the, we're other authority.
Yeah, I, I would love to just strike our other authority.
And then... Well, if we're still on that, what does duly authorized mean? Duly authorized by what? Is that a vote, or is it a sort of, you know, well?
Well, then it should say vote.
Then it should say vote.
I don't know why we took the vote out, out of there.
So duly means however authorized. What I want to get away from are more squibbles about whether, you know, we approve a liaison policy, but we didn't approve a 20-page contract. You know, if there's an authority of the town council, that's what we're, what I'm looking for.
But it has to be a vote.
But that's not new language, the duly authorized.
Yeah, that's always...
Right, now, I don't like that we took the affirmative vote off.
That's what I mean, you've left it with duly authorized, and you took out the part that says...
No, but also a liaison, for example, is explicitly an agent of the entire town council. Their, their action is limited in what they can do in that capacity, but we don't have an affirmative vote to appoint liaisons.
If I could make a suggestion, I think, I think it would be best to leave in the language duly authorized and, and to strike the affirmative vote language and to... language duly authorized, and to strike the affirmative vote language, and to replace the underlying or other authority with a specific reference to the charter. And therefore, it is good to take the vote out, because you're not voting on a charter emergency authority. It is simply implied, it's simply a statutory construct. So, I think the best way to do this, if we're going to dig into this language, is to say that unless duly authorized to do so by the town council or under provisions of the town charter.
Right, but if you take out prior authorization by affirmative vote, Trish has a point. What does duly authorized mean?
Well, in that case, it means that the charter allows the president to act in an emergency situation and then report back.
Yeah, but I'm not, the question, oh, I'm sorry, Gio, I didn't mean to interrupt, but the question isn't so much about the president, because the president's authority under the charter is pretty well enumerated. It's more, what are other counselors who aren't the president, who aren't addressed in the charter? What's duly authorized by who? That's the bigger question.
I understand that, and actually, that was my next, my comment on this has to do with the next line and how that reads, and to some extent, it goes to that question. But I just think if you, if you want that section to be, to be precise, then it should say duly authorized, not, it shouldn't reference a vote, because you don't, you don't vote on charter emergency provisions. So, there may be a whole way to rewrite this, but if you're going to stick with this structure, I would recommend that, that approach. Is that helpful?
So, let me just come to number eight, then I'm going to let you go through your list, then we'll come back to this as long as you, as long as you want, if you want. The last thing, just updated, the Roberts rules from the 10th, the 11th edition, and that's it. Makes clear if the solicitor's here, he's the parliamentarian, if he's not, then yes, moderator is. Okay. We had some items. I don't remember, remember a lot of them in the nature of grammar, but if you want to apply to the list, let me make sure I didn't miss anything. And I'd love to know how you feel about this provisional vote thing in work sessions. I'm a little, eh, about that.
That was actually my first comment. I, I'm not uncomfortable having that, that language in there, but I think it might help to define what a provisional vote is. You know, Roberts rules, as far as I know, doesn't, doesn't get into that, so we're sort of saying that like we know what it means, but it may be helpful to clarify what a provisional vote is and what it isn't, more importantly. And so that it's non-binding, there's, you know, nothing that, that prevents a counselor from changing their vote, you know, between the provisional vote and the final vote, or the actual vote, I should say. I, I understand why you would do a provisional vote, to sort of signal the intent, but I would be concerned about the possibility of that confusing, or somehow, you know, being viewed as vesting somebody's interest in, in a matter.
Me, too. So, I'd like to take that whole sentence out unless somebody wants to, will go to another one.
Is that where I knew, or was that...
That's been there, but I, I don't know. Maybe I even wrote it six years ago, or 10 years ago, but...
I'd be comfortable having it out if that's the council's preference.
Yeah, I would just take it out.
Good deal. Okay. And it's, Open Meetings Act speaks to this, so it still has other...
4C, I thought it was confusing. Sorry, this is page five, no, I'm sorry, page six, on the consent agenda. General correspondence counselors need not be placed on the consent agenda and considered a public document unless requested by the person or entity transmitting the request. I, I don't, I think that could be read as sort of having the council define what's a public document or not, which it can't do. So, I think that needs, I wasn't really sure what the intent was, so I didn't offer a rewrite to this.
So, my issue, and this, I think I had some feedback from somebody on this, is, the concern I had is that we want everybody in the public to be able to write to the council, but I'm a little uncomfortable that by choosing to write to the council, to write to us, that it automatically becomes a document that gets shared to the whole world. And I'm worried that not all citizens want that. They want to be able to write to us privately, which they are permitted to do under the Public Records Act. And so, I'm all about transparency, but the constituents can and do all the time call and communicate with us. And so, I just want to add clarity that every time the clerk gets the document, that it doesn't necessarily become this public document, unless the person sending it wants it to. That was my intent, may not be drafted there.
How are the people sending it in going to know that it's architied beyond the agenda?
Well, we'll have to make, because this happens all the time. We get communications that make it the consent agenda, and then when all of us, we come here, we open up our folder, and we also sometimes just get letters that were just handed to us, but they're not on the consent agenda. There seems to be some inherent authority that the agenda team has. If it's something that's, you know, particularly private or personal attacks or salacious, then we're just not putting it on. But I don't know that there's clarity on this, and if...
Would, would it?
You know, I would see it being...
If it said, "Correspondence to counselors need not be placed on the consent agenda", where it would be considered a public document unless requested by the person? Instead of "and"?
Well, first of all, does the solicitor agree with me that communications to elected officials are exempt from the public records?
Constituent communications are an exception to the Public Records Act. I, I don't know if your goal would be to, I mean, obviously, if you have a vote or take some action on it, that's a different story, but a constituent communication in and of itself is not necessarily a public record. Would you, do you want the communicator to make an affirmative request for confidentiality, or do you want to presume confidentiality unless they've asked to be included or to make this a part of the council packet or, or a public record?
I presume a presumption of confidentiality, but I think either one of those is a step better than this. What I'm worried about is somebody writing and suddenly getting pulled off the consent agenda, and they're kicked around in the public debate for 30 minutes without any, you know.
I think, just to, just to...
Either way the assumption goes is fine.
I think I'm sort of struggling with this, only because I, I worry that if you, if you make a rule that says that these are not public, and then one counselor decides that they're going to share this publicly, then somehow are we putting you in jeopardy as a council or individuals? I think right now, under the Public Records Act, it's discretionary, you know, as to whether you deem a constituent communication a public record. And that discretion lies with the body, the town. But I worry, I don't have an answer for you, I apologize. I don't know what the best process is that puts you at the least risk. I understand the, the desire to allow constituents to communicate, but I think the pressures of transparency, you know, are there as well.
I have to say, I've never seen a constituent letter pulled from consent and having that person be, you know, attacked or disparaged. Historically, although I've noticed it's gotten kind of fuzzy lately, historically, every letter that came, if it was addressed to the entire council, or addressed to the town clerk and said, "Please distribute to the entire council," it would go in the consent agenda, because that implied that it was going to everybody, and that, you know, it could become part of the record. Communication between constituents and individual counselors, or only two counselors that they know, those never have been included in the consent agenda. So, if somebody sent me an email, that didn't end up in the consent agenda. If they sent it to me and Joe, it didn't end up in the, but the ones that went to the clerk with everybody's name on them, or the, or just to the clerk that says, "Please distribute to the entire council," they've always been in the consent agenda. And I, I think that the intent, when you do that, is that you want everybody to see it. But I've never seen a case where a counselor's pulled a letter off and attacked the letter writer. I mean, it's...
There have been cases where we've worked with the council president or the team doing the agenda, and found something just not appropriate to put on the agenda. That has not been put on. It might be distributed under FYI, and we've kept track of what has been distributed that way. But any correspondence, especially with a purpose, "I don't want solar, I want solar, I don't want this, I want this," that's always been put on the correspondence like that, but there is a purpose to it, really. But I will say, I'm sure Counselor DiMederos can think of some instances that we have reviewed, and the president, it's not my decision, but the president or the solicitor would, would say, "That's really just not appropriate to put on there." Or if something has come in anonymously. Now, I will say this, counselors are very good about, "Hey, I didn't see you clerk on this, but it went to all council, here it is, it's got to go," that stuff. And it's very rare, but we have, there have been instances, just to be disclosed properly.
Sounds like maybe the thing to do here is just to stay silent on it, maintain the current practice.
I think we know if it doesn't, and if a...
Because you had another concern that once, I mean, you know, just because you haven't seen it in the public doesn't mean it hasn't happened, or we haven't heard about it. Another concern that has floated is counselors alleging that they did not receive copies of communications, that others did. And so, that was why there's a bias towards making sure it's something. So, why don't we, we'll see what you want to do. Perhaps the thing to do here is to just stay silent, leave it as it is, and it'll be subject to every other, which is like we handle in the other agenda.
I'm going to pull out, same...
Right. I guess that would mean, if that's where we land, that it still falls within the agenda setting protocols, the agenda team, and then the requister can still request that it remain private. You can help make them understand that. If they're really looking for it to be on the agenda, it is going to be a public document, unless there's something else like a health record or something. Okay. Back to your list.
In the second paragraph of 4D, it begins, "In the event that any professional charging," I think the comma there should be stricken. And I think the phrase verbally noticed, which is at the end of that same paragraph, this is the second paragraph of D, executive session, the public will be verbally noticed. I don't, I just don't like the phrase.
I just took that whole sentence out.
Well, there we go. Why do I not see a section 6D?
I think it is B. This was making clear...
Oh, yeah.
I don't remember.
I, I just was suggesting that I should say, "But either may be excused."
Either.
One or the other, or both, but...
You've got neither or both.
Yeah, that's fine. Section 7B, actions by counselors. Well, this, we were on this before, but this is my other, my other concern. This says that counselors aren't duly authorized to take independent action, essentially. But then the second sentence that starts, "Whenever any counselor holds him herself or herself out as," is assuming that somebody is in fact taking action without authority. So, I don't think we should, I think that becomes confusing. You shouldn't be able to do what the second line contemplates if you're not duly authorized.
Right. I think I'm, I think it would be best to read as say, "Whether authorized or not, if you do it, you better tell the council about it," right? But you could say, "When so authorized." Your concern is that it implies an authority that...
Yeah, I think that's fine, whether authorized or not. I think that makes sense, and that sort of puts a backstop in there, and it certainly makes it more clear, yeah.
Can I make a comment about Rob, Chair? All right. I'm concerned that, for some reason, because you're a counselor, you're not allowed to, like, talk to the chief, fire chief, or talk to the police chief, ask him a question to get some clarity on something. It doesn't mean you're, you know, going out there and putting yourself as a town counselor, but sometimes you just want to ask a question. In fact, I've been told twice that I can talk to Chief Rymals if I have, and he's even offered to help if there's a question on something I don't understand in his report, or I want to ask a question, or I want to sit and talk with him about the rescue truck, or, I mean, I'm not understanding why all of a sudden you become a town counselor, you just want to ask a question, and now you're told, like, you can't ask anybody a question.
No, no, that's not true, though. You can't direct them to do something. Only the town administrator can direct, but you can go ask questions.
No, I know that. I know, but that...
You can go ask questions.
I know that. The, the problem is that, because questions were asked by a counselor to the school committee or the, or the superintendent, that all of a sudden, "Oh, my goodness, you can't talk to anybody. You're putting yourself out there like the, like the town counselor, and we didn't approve it." Well, is that any different than me sitting and talking to the fire chief about a question about, you know, his report, "I don't understand something," or is it that, you know, "The rescue truck, like, I saw Little Compton out there, what happened?" Like, I, I'm not allowed to talk to anybody? Is that where we are?
No, that's not where we are.
Well, it seemed that way from the, the school committee woman, Ms. Fonsworth, and, and I have to take exception to it, because I think we don't lose the right, as, as a citizen of this town, just because we're a town counselor, to ask somebody a question.
Donna, I, I think that asking a question is different than going and proposing a 2% budget and decreasing a budget by 5%. I think that's the difference. Going there and asking what each item means and blah, 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 and trying to get some information about the school committee's budget is totally different than...
Anybody can make, anybody, anybody in this town can sit down with anybody and ask questions. And if they want to, they can ask questions about the budget, and why is it 4%, and why is it 5%? You have a right as a citizen to ask.
I didn't say it's not even a right, it's a responsibility.
Exactly, but that's not what the impression was.
Maybe we should actually let Mr. Katz respond, since he was challenged on that point. But did we get through your list?
My, my last comment on, on this policy was in section nine, a bit of a savings clause.
I'm going to ask if you can bring him forward.
I, I think it might be helpful just to reference all of the, the big picture policies that, that this should not conflict with town charter, open meetings law, Public Records Act, Code of Ethics, any other applicable law, which it already says. But then I also thought a sentence that, that indicated that any provision hereof deemed to be contrary to such authority shall not, shall be deemed void, and this policy shall be then interpreted in the manner most liberally giving force to its intent absent that provision. So, again, saving, saving as much of it as, as we can if there is a conflict.
So, thank you, appreciate that. I agree with all of that. So, I wanted to give Justin the chance to comment if he wants to on that, and I'm going to get you back to Donna, and then we'll see where we go and wrap this up. Did you want to comment on this, either specifically to the public comment or to this conceptual point?
The, I'm not sure.
Well, it's just this sort of balance, where you're out there trying to do your job and meet with people, and, you know, you get, you know, like, we can't talk to anybody without a seven-hour meeting here.
Look, I think the, I think this is silly, and I think it's people making a lot out of nothing. You can sit down with somebody, and when you say the words, "I'm here, I can't promise anything, I'm here to, so we can understand each other," you're not holding yourself out as an agent of the entire town council. I mean, it's, it's pretty much that simple in my mind. So, if people want to make big front-page controversies of this, well, you know, go ahead, but I think most people will see that it's just a silly political maneuver.
Back to you. I didn't mean to cut you off. Do you have more?
No, I just think we have a right to ask questions like anybody else.
Okay.
Okay, so, mindful of the time, and again, mindful that you haven't seen, I had attempted to incorporate everything you just heard, I think, without exception, what you just heard from the solicitor, so, and I don't sense a 7-0 vote on at least all these provisions. Do you want to, what's your pleasure? Do you want to see another, another draft? Do you want to attempt to? Here's what I would do if we were to take a vote on this. I would strike the second sentence of 2B that talks about provisional votes, and rely on the Open Meetings Act. And as compared to the draft that you've seen, we have disagreement on how the open forum will go, and I don't propose to eliminate it, but I propose to make it more efficient. If you want to add in more language, that specifically adopts the practice, which I've been doing, which is allowing the public to speak on every agenda item, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, actually, Anna, what I was thinking was, if we... Yeah, actually, on a, what I was thinking was, if we were to strike the language where it says, "Otherwise at meetings, strike from during through comment," and in place put in something to the effect of, "Wherein public participation shall generally be assumed on every agenda item." And that way, it's clear to people, you can talk when a subject interests you.
Does it need to say, "Subject to reasonable time constraints," or is that somewhere else in the document?
Well, I think it's once for a period of two minutes or longer at the discussion of the president during all of these time, these situations. So you're already covered by the timeline and the discussion of the president.
All right. I guess we can always waive the rule. If we have 100 people come and try to filibuster a meeting, then.
Well, yeah, well, the president can do that, and then if the rest of the town council disagrees, they can, I assume, move to challenge the decision.
Okay, I would change publicly audiotaped and videotaped to the word officially. I'm sorry, this was page four, at least of the comparison black line, item 3G as in golf, just the parenthetical that says that the council will endeavor to keep minutes as comprehensive as reasonably possible, but also considering whether the meeting is being officially audiotaped or videotaped.
Rob, just so it doesn't get lost, under 4A, there's a parentheses that I, right before, four lines, five lines down, that I don't think got removed. I don't think.
Help me.
Here.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah, I don't think these, that parentheses belongs, maybe. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think.
If this goes through tonight, just take a grammar scrub at it.
Okay, all right.
But that's a good point. Item 3, four, that is 4A, page five of the comparison, second, first full paragraph, first sentence, striking on the solicitor's recommendation and made available for council members and the general public on Thursday by noon. And on Friday morning, on weeks before Monday is a holiday, that we just go silent with that and rely on the open meetings act. Page six, which is item 4D, we strike the verbal notice of indicating whether paid professionals are here, because we'll just rely on the rule that we're going executive session in nine.
Did we want to step the consent agenda, the changes you had made? So maintain the original language.
I did, I did, I'm sorry, stepped those edits. Thank you. So on 4C.
If it's a paid professional.
Last sentence gone.
Just remove the new proposed last sentence about general correspondence.
And also the striking, that's just that.
I would still move things to the end of the agenda, hold from the CA. But this would stay.
Yeah, okay.
Mrs. Kramer, with page seven, section 6B, we'll add the language, "Either or both." That the town administrator or town solicitor may be excused from attendance at special meetings and workshops. 7B, we will step the proposed change, it says, "Or other authority," but say instead, "Do we authorize to do so by the town council or?" What was it?
Under provisions of the town charter.
Under the provisions, under a provision of the charter?
Provisions, I would.
Provisions, under the provisions of the charter. This is page seven of the black line, seven, Bravo. And then the second sentence, to add clarity, will say, "Whether authorized or not, a council, a councillor acting as an agent should report back."
That doesn't make sense. If you're not authorized to do it, you shouldn't even report back.
I think the intent of that line, I wasn't here, obviously, when that language was first debated, but I think the intent was to make sure that if anyone did hold themselves out, whether inadvertently or otherwise, they had an obligation to then come back and report that.
Here's maybe an example. I mean, I think Nancy was at a federal mediation, and by order of the judge was sort of like, "I don't care what you're doing in Tiverton, you're here speaking for the town." And you can imagine a scenario where there wasn't this express affirmative vote, but under other authority, I would say, you know, which we're taking out, you know, she's holding herself out as an agent and needs to come back and report that back to the team.
Yeah, but we appointed her to do that.
In that case, but you can imagine scenarios where things like that come up. So.
I can't, honestly.
So we don't agree on that one?
You can't what?
And.
The judge asked you to talk, and you're sitting there?
No, 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 we put you there, though.
We discussed this.
Yeah.
I mean, that was, that was, the council discussed that you would be the representative that would go and do that.
So you did it. So you did have our authority.
I'm struggling to see why you wouldn't instruct council members who even wrongly went out and held themselves out as, speaking for the council, to come back and say, "I did this, and you needed to know what happened." I mean, I don't, I'm just not seeing the controversy.
That's fine, we're never gonna, that's fine.
I could even see a scenario, which, like the one where we're having this debate that was just raised, is you could see somebody come back and say, "Hey, I didn't hold myself out as the agent for everybody, but just so you're all aware of it, there's no question about it, I'm reporting back." This might support that as well. And then the entire expansion of the other applicable law and the savings clause, I would adopt that word for war. So, what's your pleasure?
I'll second Nancy's motion.
Well, I mean, I had a couple of other things that I wanted to bring up, but.
Give me discussion after the.
Sure. If we can adopt this, our meetings will always be this long, so.
Is that what your motion was?
Subject to the.
Subject to the.
Yeah, okay.
Changes.
Floor's open, Councillor.
So, you know, I think as far as the open forum goes, if you're going to continue the open forum, I think that that's wonderful. If you're going to put some language in that generally people can speak on topics, that's fine. I would be cautious, though, about promising people they can speak on everything, because there are certain personnel matters or certain types of other things where really the public can't speak. So whatever language you have in there, it should be clear that there are certain things that, you know, can't and shouldn't be open occasionally for public discussion. I do have, I am worried about this sort of nine o'clock. What happens when it gets to nine o'clock? Are we just going to stop and go into executive session?
I guess we are.
I mean, what happens to people who maybe who have come, or somebody who's brought their attorney, or their engineer, or whoever it is? We're just going to stop and go to executive session at nine o'clock?
Well, what we've done in other scenarios is that two-thirds of the members present can extend the debate, but that's, as any rule, that's the rule, and unless it's suspended in real time by two-thirds, or amended by a majority for future meetings, then that's exactly, that's exactly what happens.
Tricia, we, if I could, we did this with the CRC, I know it's not the town council, but we would go, you know, we want to end at 10:00, and then 10:00 could come, and we weren't finished, so everyone would be asked if they wanted to continue, and most the time we did, we just wanted to get it done, and sometimes it was just going to be too late. So we would just take that and put it on the next agenda. I know it's not always possible, but it worked pretty good, so maybe we could try it. And you have to try something sometimes. It worked out well with the CRC, and a lot of times we just did say, yes, let's go to 11:00.
But sometimes our items are time-sensitive, so decisions have to be made.
Well, we're intelligent people, we can figure that out.
Always make a motion to waive that policy and take a vote.
Yeah, just move it around.
Rather than mute every night of the week.
On the agenda thing, about the packet, I would like something in here that says, "Backup materials have to be in the packet." I really resent getting long, complicated things on a Monday afternoon, or by email two hours before the meeting. It's not fair, you can't be prepared, and if you want the meetings to go more quickly, I would suggest that making sure all the backup is in the packet would go a long way to doing that. And if you don't have all the backup for the packet, then it just doesn't, it doesn't happen that meeting. So I would strongly suggest that that get added. Again, I, you know, I sort of brought up the nine o'clock thing, I'm a little bit worried about it. I am also worried about moving consent agenda things, sometimes which are very time-sensitive to the end of the meeting. I think in the beginning, this council is taking more things off the consent agenda. I think that that practice, you know, as more people have gotten used to it, is much less, so I don't think that we should, I don't think that we should do that. I do think that changing the language about, you know, actions by councillors is important. I think that it is important, and, you know, our rights to ask anybody questions for purposes in, you know, of inquiry only are protected by the charter. So for purposes of inquiry only, we can ask and encourage to ask people anything. But other than that, you know, there is language in here that says, "No one councillor, only the body can make decisions, only the body can."
Direct.
You know, can present something as supported or not supported by the council, and we all have to recognize and acknowledge that, and be extremely careful that we don't put ourselves in that position.
So, but I believe this is old language, no councillor, right? I mean, that's not new, it's not blue. I don't have the. So you want that changed?
No, I think what's, what's important here is that, that the other authority part come out, because it should be only the council, whether it's by vote or verbally, to, you know, assign somebody a task, and that might be a case where it's not a formal vote, but it's a consensus. And I do agree that that language about, well, if you did it, you should report, right? It's, you know, you just shouldn't do it, and you should know better.
Mr. President, I'd like to, in light of commentary change on, I don't know where we, 3E, speaking by members of the public, maybe put after or longer at the discretion, somewhere in there, add about applicable law. Unless prohibited by applicable law, members of the public shall be entitled to speak, et cetera. And somewhere in there, just to clarify that there will be agenda items that get nulls.
So my issue is that I don't know that applicable law allows, you know, we could have had the person that applied for the Harvard Commission today come in here, and if we take the changes that you are proposing, you know, 150 people could speak for two or three minutes or longer, allow it on that matter, and it's not banned by applicable law. So we still have this situation where if you open it up to every agenda item, then it's going to start to look like every agenda item, every litigation matter, every, everything becomes an open, an endless, potentially endless, open discussion.
I don't think we can do one.
So the balance is to try to strike. Now, I think that this moderator has been more open than any I've seen on allowing comment, that it is not as a right on every single agenda item.
No, well, my understanding was we had already modified it to add that public participation shall generally be assumed on every agenda item, and I was looking to restrict that, at least in, to add the note that applicable law may prevent that from being a case. So it's your discretion, or applicable law.
Or applicable law, that's fine.
That's all those.
Here's a thought. How about on the open forum thing, that you make a note that says that people wishing to speak, you know, on an agenda item shall be asked to wait and speak till the agenda item, and that the open forum is restricted for non-agenda items, or something like that. I'd also, just because now I'm starting to have looked at this enough times, I know that there's a motion and a second on the table, I would really rather vote on a clean copy of this. That's just me, because I've got enough markups on this paper that I'm not sure what I have in front of me anymore.
I'm neutral. I don't want to get it done, but it's up to you.
I don't, I don't want to move so quickly that someone's very uncomfortable, so I'm fine if you just want to see a clean copy.
Okay.
Counselor.
All right, done.
But something has to happen in the motion. Whose motion is it?
Oh, it was mine, so.
The question is to withdraw and carry this to the next meeting. Is that good?
Is that good?
All right. Okay, you got one more? Absolutely.
Sally Plack, 64 Broadview Drive, yes? First of all, I'd like to thank you during the charter and this, that you let us speak on things. I really liked the open forum at the beginning, because the item doesn't have to be on the agenda, and sometimes you would like to come up and speak. The school committee has it, but we have regulations with it, written down on the paper, so everyone will know, like personnel matters and things that you can't talk about. And it also says that the school committee can't respond, so that if people come up and start asking you questions, you can't answer anything, because it's not on the agenda. So it kind of separates it, and it goes pretty quickly that way. But it's right on the paper, so everyone knows when they sign up, that they can't come up and chat with you about an issue. Okay, thank you.
My view, that's part of the problem with the open forum, is people could then take an opportunity to sit up there and say things that aren't true to you, and that does happen, and then you can't respond. So I think that's one, that's actually one of the problems with the forum, as opposed to a benefit.
This is a good, yes, sir.
I was going to say, I think the president could bang the gavel and say, "You're out of order," and put a stop to it right there, if they feel like they're attacking somebody or, you know, making derogatory statements.
But would you say, we're going to strike that from the record, and then people just have to, I mean, it's just, something's been said.
If you see they're getting into that, you could stop them and say, you know, that's it, you're done. And we get the police officer to remove them or somebody if they don't want it, that's what you got to do.
I think that was a good discussion, and we'll take one more try at this, and I don't know that we'll have all seven of us perfectly happy, but hopefully all seven of us agree some things are proven. Okay. This, I, in that spirit, I do not, I'm not suggesting we vote on this tonight, but let's, you know, this is part of the problem, right? I mean, you know, some of these things don't make the packet, because there's a lot of stuff to be done and a lot of deadlines, but we're moving on now to the request for proposals for town solicitor and/or other legal services commencing July 1.
Rob, could we table this until the next meeting, since we just received this at 7:00 when we walked in?
I want to introduce it, but not vote on it, because where I'm going with this, because I promised that we would move on these items, and I want to make sure that nobody accuses us of delaying on them, unless that's what all of you want to do. So you have a draft, this is a public document. We had some trouble finding the old version of this, but we got it. It's not in word form, so I don't have a comparison for you. This is my draft. I've only shared it with Nancy Driggs, who's our other practicing attorney on board, and it is essentially borrows from the prior town, the town of Tiverton example, and I also consulted examples from three other Rhode Island towns that I happen to have available to me, and then put in some of the content that Nancy and myself thought would be relevant. So what probably makes sense here is for all of you to read this. I can walk through it now, or I can walk through it at the next meeting, but before we table this, I do want to make sure we have a consensus on what the schedule would look like, because I do want to honor the commitment to have this process done and done well, and done as thoroughly as everybody wants it to be done, but also try to hit the July 1 target. And I guess that's not critical, according to a month extension, maybe that would work out, I don't know, but I really want to try to hit July 1. So if we were to adopt this today, which I don't think we will, then on the quarterly planning document, I had, I think, we had a workshop tentatively scheduled for the third, or I should say, the fifth Monday in April. It feels like April 29th or something like that, to dedicate towards interviews and things along those lines.
I think that's too tight.
That's too tight if we don't prove this tonight. So is everybody, let me ask you this.
I don't, I don't know, but...
I think we usually post it for how long, Nancy? Like a month? Yeah, yeah.
So that would be something like, a month until the deadline?
Yeah, so that would be May 8th.
And then we can probably...
Do interviews, that would, that would do it.
So we would probably have a session to call down to an interview group, and then schedule the interviews, so that starts to feel like the interviews are late May? That's fine, right?
You could probably start interviews the second week of May, really.
Well, I don't know that we would commit to interviewing every applicant, right? If we got 20 applicants.
No, so what we, what we normally do is have a session where we go through the applicants, and we agree on who we want to interview, make it like five or six people, it usually is only about five or six people, and then we set up interviews after that.
Totally agree.
That's what we've, we've always done.
I should say, I, this draft has us doing all those interviews in the open, that's my personal opinion.
We have to do it in the open.
So...
It's not an executive thing.
So instead of doing interviews on April 29th, it would be May 28th? Okay? Gives us the whole, up to June?
Yes, May 27th is Memorial Day.
Okay. It gives us a month to make a decision and reach a contract, all that, is everybody okay with that timeline?
Yep.
My, my only comment, and just having only briefly reviewed this, I think there's a problem with the conflict of interest language in here. There's two sections, one entitled conflicts of interest, and then, and then section 13 also requires subsection D, any known or potential conflicts of interest. I think you're running up against the professional responsibility requirements, and, and a lawyer in most cases should not even disclose a representation, and so it's impossible to, to disclose a conflict of interest unless you have your client's agreement to disclose the representation.
Where are we?
13D, that's a good point.
Okay.
That isn't a lot of the other conflicts, but...
Yeah. You know, in terms of section 10, you know, what, what you're, what you're requiring is something that's already required, so it's redundant, given that you're hiring a Rhode Island bar lawyer who is obliged to not have conflicts of interest, but I think that, that concerns me less than 13, where you're asking them to disclose something they probably can't disclose.
Could you identify the document that you're talking about?
Absolutely.
Yeah, RFP.
It's a, it's a draft that was only sent out today, so we won't be voting on it. If we can find the word version of the prior version, and I will run a comparison, so it's much easier to see the changes that are being suggested here, but it, frankly, it was a lot of work to get it into this shape, so, okay, so...
May I ask one question?
Yes, absolutely.
On the indemnification of the 2 million per claim, that number came from where?
It used to be 3 million, I lowered it to 2 million, just in my draft, I think that's more customary with what standard coverage is, and I don't know how much time you want to spend on it, but in general, I loosened things up a little bit to try to cast a wider net, and I wanted to have...
Well, that was kind of, that was actually my question, because my understanding is our RF, our last RFP, that our number was a little high, and it made the net a little narrow, so that's, that was really my whole question, that answers it, thank you.
I'm happy to speak to you, but I think if we can find the word version, it would be so much easier to walk through it with that.
I'm trying to think of that.
What form do we have it?
I had it in PDF, I ran the conversion, it, my software didn't, it wasn't a clean PDF, so it was like a scan from a computer, but you may have some superpowers.
Send it to me, I'll see if my software will do it. That doesn't make it a public record, does it?
Yes.
My, my software?
Yes.
Then I guess I can't do it, then.
Okay. Okay, so I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with the timeline, there's not a single objection, this is a draft, there will be a vote on this probably on April 8th, with a view towards at least a month of public notice, and a selection process that will have interviews the day after Memorial Day, most likely, with a target higher date of July 1.
Yep.
All right, done.
Thank you, Rob.
FTR votes. I actually don't have any, I just wanted to make sure that if we did have any, that we, we did them, and it looks like Mr. Katz has some, so I'm going to turn it over to him and anybody else that wants to comment on this.
He just got these, too.
Yeah, no, I realize that, the problem is, I think we're running up on the deadline before our next meeting, so, I mean, we can either have a special meeting to do resolutions, or go through them pretty quickly now, I mean, I can summarize pretty quickly what I've added and what I've changed and why.
Most of these were, a lot of these were in prior, but a lot of them were in the budget committee resolutions.
Well, the biggest thing I changed, and the reason I grabbed some of the budget committee ones, and mainly as a suggestion to them, is that if you look at the last sentence of pretty much every one, I added that funds remaining in this restricted account at the end of June 30, 2019, shall be carried over into the neck, into the same account for fiscal year 2020, and I did that because I haven't seen any mechanism in our resolutions to actually carry the money forward to the, to the next year, which is why it surprised me when I started looking at the budget to actual documents, that there was suddenly a deposit, and I just think this clarifies so people understand, and this is, this would be just the mechanism that creates the restricted account and carries it, makes it perpetual. So in the first one, last year, both, two, two different resolves passed, one said a minimum of 25%, and the one that got more votes said no more than 25% of any sale from the industrial park would go toward projects in the industrial park, so I just figured it'd be easier to just settle that at 25%. The second one, I, the only change there is I added the funds remaining is just stick to the count language. The revaluation, same thing, I just made sure that it carries over, and also the elections, no, no change except to carry it over. Paving and drainage, that's the same thing, and then the, the one that's a little more detailed is the last one, and this addresses the issue I've been bringing up about the capital expense fund. It still takes 25% of anything that, any overages in our accounts at the end of the year, and puts them in this restricted account, but it defines that that account can be used only to accomplish capital projects that have already been approved, if they need more money, because the appropriated funds are insufficient, or to, to address an expense from a declared state of emergency, similar to what we can use the general fund for, but this would allow us to use the capital money as well, or you need a resolution to expend the money, you need a, sorry, a referendum to expend that money, and also I added that any funds remaining at the end of the year will carry over to the next year. So those were just three, just six things I threw in there, most of them just to capture that carryover.
Before we dive into these, did anybody, any other counselors have a proposed resolution? I just want to know for time management purposes.
No.
Yeah, all right, floor's open.
John had his hand up, I think.
May I ask a question? So on the last one, the phrase declared state of emergency, state of emergency, for me means something a little heavier than, you know...
Well, it would be something big.
It wouldn't need to be big, it is something unanticipated, and for example, if it's public safety related, or public, department, public safety department related, you know, I think it should be eligible for that, because I think that's what the intent is, and I'm not sure that when you use state of emergency, that's, that could be a very high bar.
Well, that's why I referred to a charter section, and it seems like it should be a high bar, but I actually haven't been able to find anywhere a definition of a state of, when the town council can declare a state of emergency.
I think that's a fair point, that maybe there ought to be more clarity about what do we mean by emergency expenditures, but state of emergency...
I, I, I think the word state is the one that threw me off as well, and it's, it's, I think the boat, the boat engines, there is an emergency in the sense that you will lose more money than you are appropriating if you don't have those boat engines up and running by the start of the season, right, because you won't be able to collect, I forget what, from the last meeting, there were some, some amounts you won't be able to collect, so that's, that's an emergency appropriation to do with public safety, but it's not a state of emergency for the town. So I, I mean, a declared emergency or a, you know, something, perhaps slightly, or to differently, maybe capturing the intent, or maybe not, maybe you need a state of emergency.
You know, I don't, I don't particularly care about the state of the emergency language, I was only mirroring in Charter, Section 310, which describes when the council can dip below 3% of the, of the reserve fund, 3% of the budget as a reserve fund. We can only do that in order to address a declared state of emergency as enacted by the town council, which is defined elsewhere in the charter. So the intent of that particular clause was just to say, if we're doing that, and it's a capital need, we can use this money instead of general fund money and going below the 3%.
If that's the intent, I might, I might suggest just striking state of from your proposal, but I, I understand your point.
It's still there, because it refers to the charter section.
Well, being down two rescues and people's lives, would that be declared a state of emergency?
I think to Justin's point, there's nothing in the charter that, to put it really crassly, I think that two-thirds of the council could declare anything within reason to be an emergency, as long as it's sort of like a rational basis review, so to speak, as long as there's some logic, there's no other control.
Well, under, did you just say this, under the town council?
Yeah, what does the charter say?
It says, the president of the town council shall have the power and authority to declare a state of emergency, which should be ratified by the council as soon as circumstances permit. An emergency shall be defined as a, as a situation wherein the public health, safety, and our general welfare of the town is imminently imperiled by an unusual or unforeseen circumstance.
There's a different section, though, right on the reserve fund, I think that's where Justin was coming with.
Yes.
Well, the reserve fund just says declared state of emergency, which I assume would go to that, but that, that doesn't strike me as a particularly high bar, actually.
I didn't assume those were the same bars, because the one bar is for the president to just declare one, the other is for the council as a body to do a spending authorization, so I would say they're not the same, but probably fair read.
The president can't declare one, well, he can, and then he has to bring it back to the council, so it would be the same.
So...
I think they're two different things.
It only had a charter. Okay, well, we got to figure this out right now, don't we?
So, are, are we taking comments here? Are we at that point or enough?
We are.
Okay, so I, I have two comments, and number two, with regard to the pay-as-you-throw program, the pay-as-you-throw revenue isn't part, part of the budget estimate, it's, it's not a revenue item in the, in the budget, it's not adopted by the electors, it, it's a restricted account that the monies go directly into, so I, I think you have to, I think you have to edit that to say, you know, any and all revenues raised by the town through the pay-as-you-go program through the fiscal year are restricted for landfill closure, because it's not a revenue item.
This says in excess of, right?
But it's not even estimated as a revenue item.
I, I guess I've never quite been satisfied that the council can restrict money without an FTR vote, is that what you're getting at, or am I missing the debate here?
Well, I, I, I'm just telling you that it's, it's not, it's never been listed as a revenue item, and...
So it's all excess.
Pardon?
So then it's all excess.
No, no, it's not, I, I mean, it's a, it's a, I, I agree that there needs, I, I'm fine with the resolution, I'm just saying that it doesn't go through, it, it doesn't come in as revenue that goes in, where does it come from? It comes from the pay-as-you-throw back.
What happened was at some point, sometime in the past decades, prior councils decided that if they got one vote at a single FTM, that thing was good for eternity, and so that's what they did with the pay-as-you-throw, and that was under Solicitor Tice, where they said, oh, well, we'll get one, one vote in FTR, FTM to make that a restricted account, and then it's just restricted forever. I don't agree with that interpretation, so I think, and I think we charter needs to change to fix that, but the only reason I actually included that was somebody, and I don't remember who, put in a resolution last year, a petition, a resolution that passed, with this exact language, except for the part that I'm trying to get into everything, which is that the funds carry over to the next year, so...
Denise, can you explain this maybe, for help here?
Sometime in 2011 or '12, when they implemented the program, there was a resolution, I wasn't sure if it was an ordinance or a resolution, that the council adopted at the time that they implemented the program, I don't think it was ever on the FTR, that any funds from pay-as-you-throw went directly to the landfill closure, that was the whole point of the program.
Well, there was, but there was also a corresponding vote at the FTM, I remember that specifically being done, and I've always thought that was, that was not legal.
I don't remember that.
I honestly don't recall that, the only thing I recall related to that at an FTM was when we used to put an additional appropriation from the, in the operating budget, we would, the $168,804, wherever that came from.
That was the one that went there.
That used to go to landfill every year, and then when they started pay-as-you-throw, I think for one or two years, we still appropriated that money, and then the program was, you know, fairly successful, so there was debate at the council level about whether or not that appropriation should continue, or if we should rely strictly on pay-as-you-throw. They decided no longer to have that additional appropriation in the operating budget, so it was just pay-as-you-throw, all those funds went restricted into the landfill. I, I think what Council Hilton is saying, and I would agree, that it's not part of the, the budget process in terms of in excess of the amount estimated as part of the budget proposal, we don't estimate any revenue from pay-as-you-throw as part of the budget proposal.
And my issue on that is, that practice, to me, violates the charter, which says all, and, we had this debate with the casino money, where...
All revenues.
All fees, penalties, payments, and miscellaneous sources of revenue shall be transmitted to you to go onto the general fund. How in the world can the town council take money as a fee and send it off to somewhere else out of the FTR? I, I've never understood that, I didn't understand the casino money, I didn't understand the pay-as-you-throw. I want to go through, and this is why the Charter Review Commission tried to clean up this language, because I think that we're violating the charter.
Does it say fee, or does it say all revenue?
The second word, all fees. What...
And all sorts, even miscellaneous, it covers every...
We had this debate with Solicitor DiSisto, and ultimately it came up with the casino money, where it was the opinion of the prior solicitor, if not the town council, that the casino money was also covered by all sources of revenue, as I say, all means all, and, so I don't understand how the town council can take fee money and keep it outside the FTR process. That's why we need to change the charter to make this clear, so I, I don't know if that's consistent with your resolution, but I'd like to just make sure that the docket approves pay-as-you-throw money, by the way, any of these other fines and fees, because fines and fees are the dog permits and the building officials, all that stuff is on the miscellaneous sources of revenue, that's all on the docket, but something magical about pay-as-you-throw is off the docket, I've never gotten.
Well, well, I, I think, when did this happen? It was before me, so it had to be before 2012.
It was around 2011 or '12.
No, I know, I just don't, I don't remember how it was happened, was it an ordinance? Was it a...
It was a little of both, there's, there's some, there's a council resolution, but then there's some ordinance language, too, for the, there is, there's both, there's a combination of two things.
And there was an FTM vote?
It was, it was Solicitor Tice did some magic, and he pulled together...
What does that mean, though?
He pulled together a resolution, and an ordinance, and a vote at the FTM, and somehow that created a restricted account outside of the charter.
So what was the vote at the FTM?
I think it was to approve that, that first appropriation, and then they considered that to be perpetual, I think that's how it, it was done, but in any event, it's a moot point, because I, I believe that was incorrect.
Which section is that in the charter? If you don't...
1214.
I forgot about that.
So the, the whole idea here is, I mean, if we don't estimate it in the budget, then this is, this covers it, because it says any excess beyond what's estimated in the budget, so if the budget estimates nothing, then the whole thing is excess, and it's covered, this makes it restricted, that's all it does, it says this, it's to the purpose that everybody thinks it's to.
Okay, well...
Well, why don't we, why doesn't it just say that it, it's any and all revenues raised by the town through the pay-as-you-throw program in fiscal year 2020 shall be restricted for the landfill closure consistent with the prior year? I mean, doesn't that say the same thing?
Well, why don't we, why doesn't it just say that it's any and all revenues raised by the town through the pay-as-you-throw program in fiscal year 2020 shall be restricted for the landfill closure consistent with the prior year? I mean, doesn't that say the same thing?
Sure.
I think the only issue there is that a resolution can't conflict with the budget proposal, so your language is some kind of saving provisions.
Yeah, but then it already has, it already says to the extent of conflict.
I'm going to go out on a limb here, and just, not as the treasurer, but as like a taxpayer, reading this section. Is it possible that when this was adopted, I mean, when I read this, "all fees, penalties, payments, and miscellaneous sources of revenue," the last thing that comes to my mind is something like pay-as-you-throw. I'm thinking about what's collected in the clerk's office, what's collected in the offices as fees, penalties, payments.
Miscellaneous sources of revenue.
But pay-as-you-throw, to me, is not a miscellaneous source of revenue. So I understand what you're saying, but you're right, it needs to be defined. But when I read that section, to me, that seems like these things that we do as a normal course of business here at the town hall, collecting revenue.
But pay-as-you-throw is a normal course of business. I don't know why you draw that line, except just the feeling of some people in town.
It's not done here at the town hall. It's done through the grocery stores.
Moring fees aren't done through the town hall.
Right. I'm just saying, as a, looking at this, pay-as-you-throw program was specifically adopted to fund the landfill. So I think with that intention in mind, that was the way the program was set up. I mean, the money actually doesn't even come to me.
This is getting worse.
It, well, it goes into a bank account that I am in control of.
Honestly, I think this is one of these where I think we all agree. It sounds to me like everybody at the table wants to see the pay-as-you-throw money go in a restricted account.
Yes.
It seems we also agree that the language, well, I don't even think the language is ambiguous, but there's no policy difference here. So does anybody really have a problem with this resolution? It doesn't hurt us. It only helps us.
Well, I think frankly, it's confusing. I mean, I think people are going to read this, that there are going to be some people who, you know, are used to, who support pay-as-you-throw bags, because they want to have the money to close the landfill. And they're going to read this, and it's going to sound confusing to them. And there's a possibility that, who knows what happens. I think it should be as simple and as straightforward as possible, that, you know, that the revenues raised for the pay-as-you-throw program are restricted to the landfill closure account, because some people won't understand the excess amount estimated as part of the budget, and some people may just not either vote for it or vote no, because they're confused by it.
Oh, it passed last year. I mean, so this isn't new language.
Well, I'm, you know...
It's the same thing as last year?
Yeah, with the exception that we're...
That's why we're going to have shorter meetings.
So it's the same language as last year, except for the last sentence. Except for the last language. All right.
It confused me last year.
And then, and, you know, as far as number six goes, you know, I don't agree with number six. The whole point of having a capital account, an emergency capital account like this, is to deal with capital emergencies, like things like the boat engine. And if it's not, if we can only access it if it's been, if it's to be used for something that we've already put into the budget, in other words, we already know we're planning on replacing it, and it's a shortfall in the amount, or that we have to declare an emergency, which I think, based on the language in the Charter, starts to get really, really fuzzy. You know, sometimes big capital things break that you aren't planning on. I wouldn't have a problem if somebody said, you know, that I want to add a provision that says, you know, you need a, you know, fourth, fifth vote of the council or something to use it, so that it isn't used, you know, without a real judicious thought. But it pretty much defeats the purpose. We might as well just not have this, and we'll just, you know, have all the money and whatever the budget and capital account is. Because unless we're going to go to the trouble of declaring a state of emergency, which I think if you really do read the Charter, it defines what a state of emergency is, and that is a really pretty high bar. You know, if something happens, and, you know, a big tree falls on this roof, and, you know, it's going to be a $45,000 repair job that we don't have the money for, well, you know, we can't. I think the system that we have now is okay. And again, if you want to add another level of oversight by, you know, requiring a larger majority vote on the council, so be it. But otherwise, we basically don't have a capital emergency account.
I think the issue, though, is that you have capital accounts that a lot of talk leading up to the FTR, whether here or on the Budget Committee, is what capital items are we going to put forth for the voters to vote on, whether it's a new plow or a new, whatever. The traditional capital things we see. And then, all of a sudden, if we have this money that's in a restricted account that's labeled capital emergency, even if you substitute fourth, fifth vote of the town council to now say, yeah, we think that's serious enough, you really are substituting the vote, the voters might have said, no, wait a minute, we would have voted, if we knew we had that money, we would have voted for that thing. Something else. That's what bothers me.
Well, except that you don't know, I mean, you don't know what the emergency is going to be. It's not like you can say to the voters, well, you know, I think in January, the half the roof might collapse. I mean, you don't know.
We have, we have funds, contingency funds, general funds. We have money to take care of emergencies. This is extra money that's going into capital. When I first saw this in the past, I thought, this is to put money into capital, and then the next year at the FTR, that money will be available to use for these capital projects. It's just a way to get money to shuffle to, to capital. It shouldn't be a way for the town council to say, you know what, I'm tired of looking at this carpet. I'm sure there are more important reasons than that. I'm just, I'm being a little extreme. So that's now an important capital expense, as opposed to, what, a rescue or something like that. So I think somewhere along the line, we don't, we don't want to create funds that are basically a way to go around the FTR process.
When's the deadline for getting these to the...
The fourth, I think. Well, they're voting on the fourth to finish, so...
I do just want to make one comment. I was at Thursday night's Budget Committee meeting, and they discussed, the chair there discussed that they were going to be going over their resolutions, but they had already reviewed the six that, or I guess the seven that they had on last year's, this happens to be last year's certified docket.
Yeah.
And some of these are...
I'm on there.
Are on theirs. Are you going to inform the Budget Committee that you're adopting these with this additional language, so they won't have to? And they'll then become part of the council's resolutions every year? Or are you going to leave them in the Budget Committee and suggest they put carried, the funds would be carried over?
Well, I...
That's usually in their kind of boilerplate.
Well, my read of the Charter is that we're not, I'm not sure that there needs to be a differentiation between town council and Budget Committee. I think that the town council requests resolutions. My intention was to get this, so we would just vote and approve, just send it to the Budget Committee. We can put restrictions on that, say we want these to be ours, or these are suggestions.
But I mean, you're going to inform them that these are the ones...
Well, that was, I think that would be the vote tonight, would be to pass this along to the Budget Committee.
Okay. So what are we doing on six?
Well, I was going to strike declared, yeah, so to address the state of emergency, and take out the word declared, and that would make it a little softer.
I thought that G O wanted us to take out state.
I did suggest that, but I think Councilor Katz has a good point, that by referring to the section in the Charter, state is in there as well. So you can take it out here, but it's still going to be in the other place. In the end, it's up to the four fifths of you to decide what a state of emergency is, and the courts will very likely defer to whatever that decision is.
And then on number two, I was just going to take out everything from in excess of to financial town referendum. So that's just that, pay-as-you-throw program in fiscal year 2020 shall be restricted for landfill closure consistent, et cetera.
So wait, what are you taking out there? In excess?
In excess through financial town referendum.
Even though you had it in the...
Yeah, just to simplify it that little bit. So, I mean, with those changes, I'll move these six resolutions...
As a budget proposal.
To be forwarded to the Budget Committee for requested inclusion, either under our heading or theirs.
And to be clear, it's a request and not an insistence. So if they elect not to approve them, then they will act against to that?
Well, I mean, that's up to us. I'm roughly neutral, so I...
We can have our own resolutions, so we can just say that these are our resolutions.
I'm fine with that.
Justin, you had that language in last year, that you're taking out in number two.
Yeah, no, that was in there last year, but it was suggested as superfluous and a little confusing, so we can take that out.
All right.
For two?
Yeah, for two. I mean, we can...
Okay. There's a motion to approve the six presented with the edits to numbers two and six. As discussed, the authority would be a request that the Budget Committee, I guess, either adopts these as their own, or should they choose not to, that they put them on as town council resolutions.
But we don't need their permission to do that. We don't... Yeah, it doesn't need to go to the Budget Committee.
Is the motion, just to make sure I understand the motion. I think, I think I'm of the view, we can do a request, and we can not do a request. So the question is, what would you like to see here? And it's your motion, so I'll put you on the spot.
To forward to the Budget Committee for inclusion on the docket.
For town council inclusion?
They just go to the...
Is that the usual process, the council resolutions?
Yeah.
Because I know the Budget Committee has got them.
They send it to the clerk, because the Budget Committee is only going to send me per Charter, their resolutions and budget. I'm going to be requesting the solicitor review them for legal issues or any of that. So, that's where that's going, from here. But yes, if the legislature wants it, they come here. If the council wants it. Because I put this together.
But what if they're the same? So you're going to put...
So what we'll do is, we'll forward it to the town clerk for inclusion on the docket, and to the Budget Committee for their information.
Yes, for information, okay.
Remind me where...
It's all fuzzy.
Where, okay. Do I dare ask this question?
Yes.
Under what authority is the council sending resolutions?
It's 14. Town councils. Submit optional budget proposal and resolutions to the town clerk no later than 37 days prior to enter town referendum. Okay. I thought it was something else.
That's if we're doing an optional budget proposal.
No, and resolutions. Optional budget and resolutions.
Okay. All right. I see your point. We can send resolutions without breaking the optional budget proposal class.
Yes.
That seems fair. It sounds to me that if you want to be absolutely certain that these are going on to the docket, they go to the town clerk, if you want to, you know, make sure there's no redundancy, or you want to cooperate with the Budget Committee, we can send them to the Budget Committee, make the submission of the clerk conditional on the Budget Committee not supporting under their authority. Is that, are we in the, is that, have we got it?
I think that's more complicated than it used to be.
To the clerk?
Goes to the clerk, to the Budget Committee for their information. And there's still time in the calendar if the Budget Committee says, no, 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 we thought about this, and this is wrong for X reason, we can modify our resolution.
So the motion is to the clerk with a courtesy copy to the Budget Committee.
Can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
If we do it, if we do it this way, and the Budget Committee has a almost the same, but not quite version, and remember, the way that our ballot works, the Budget Committee resolutions are all together with the Budget Committee resolutions, and then the council, so what happens if both of them pass? I'm just wondering.
That's what happened last year.
The one with more votes, controls.
What I see happening is, when the Budget Committee sees what our resolutions are, they're just going to say, oh, this was what we were going to do, this is what we were going to do, and they won't submit the same resolutions. That's how this has happened in the past.
And I believe your clock has ticked, or will have ticked, before you can change your resolutions. But you could certainly remove a resolution and let them substitute a Budget Committee resolution for the same purpose that has different language, if, but you could pull one out.
What I've seen in the past is the Budget Committee has gone, yes, that's what we were going to write, so we'll let the town do it, town council do it.
I think I still need a second.
Well, did you want to divide the question, or you?
No. I don't want to make it any more complicated.
Okay. Yeah, a motion. Is there a second on all six?
All second.
What do you want to do? Take a vote? Divide the question? We're going to take a vote on all six, unless someone starts amending, or what you got?
I'm sorry, Theresa, I don't think you're going to act on this, but I have mentioned a couple of times that when the council and then the Budget Committee considers a capital budget, in particular, when we think about the context of a five-year capital plan, some consideration should be given to making those capital accounts rollover accounts, subject to council approval of the rollovers. Does that require a resolution?
My view is that, at the moment, it does, but that in the next year or two, as we do forward-looking planning, we should look to amend the Charter to include something that creates that mechanism without the annual approval. So that's where we're going, I think.
A capital improvement fund that the Charter View Commission approves would do that. Okay. Sounds like we're going to take a vote on all six. I know there's not unanimous support for all six, so does everyone anything stated on the record before we take this vote? Okay. This is all this in favor of all six, subject to the corrections made and discussed. This is to the clerk with a courtesy copy to the Budget Committee. All is in favor. Any opposed? Four to three. Okay. Next up, town administrator, private department rescue truck. Request approved to order a new rescue truck to be purchased or delivered in fiscal year 20, $250,000. Or, in the alternative, approve a demo model available at a lower price of $239,000.
Thank you. So I included in the preliminary budget request, and the council included in its final budget request, $250,000 in FY '20 in the capital budget for this purpose. In the meantime, what we have learned is that the time between order and delivery is several months. And taken into consideration that we currently only have one rescue truck operational, the question is whether the council would approve the order being placed now, so that we actually might be able to get a truck in around July. The alternative could be purchasing a demo model that is currently available, and we could probably get it more quickly. It would be a little bit less expensive as well. But, you know, the most significant part of this whole request is that it's not budgeted at this point in time, so it's a very significant request.
Rob, the only thing that concerns me about this request is, as far as I know, the Budget Committee hasn't gone over their capital and approved what they're going to put on their docket. So we don't even know if they're including that. And not only that, but if there's alternative budgets that don't include the fire truck, and that's voted in, then the town did not approve the fire truck. And we're spending money that wasn't approved. So we're spending money before it goes to the referendum. And I know Justin would have to agree that that's a little bizarre, because the people haven't voted for it yet. And not only that, it's not on, we haven't seen all the budgets that might be on the referendum. And I mean, I doubt it, but suppose there is a budget that doesn't have the fire truck on there. If that gets voted in, what do we do then? We have ordered a truck, and we can't pay for it.
So to me, there's your request, but you actually authorize this now, or are you making it additional?
Well, there are two alternatives here. One is to do what you object to, or that you raise concerns about, which I agree with. And the other one would be, alternatively, basically, here comes the question, is it an emergency or not? Is it important for public safety to...
And then we just take it out of the general fund without a vote?
I guess, which, you know, none of which I'd like to suggest either, but right now, that's what we have, one truck. And we can explain a little bit further what happened with the trucks, which we may need to do in the...
But what happened with the 2014 truck? What, don't we have a 2014 one?
Yeah, that's rescue one, so that was the one that, when I came in early February, the eleventh or whatever it was, I had a call of eight to nine thousand dollars from Highway Department to fix that one. Shortly after that meeting, it was discovered that there was more issues, there was mechanic found metal filings, if you will, in the oil. Excuse me, so to put that money into the repairs that needed, that we knew at that point needed to be done, was kind of... Kind of crazy, because we didn't know the extent of the whole problem, the issue with the motor for that truck. So, it took a little while, he had to send oil off to be analyzed. I'm not a mechanic, I don't know exactly, I think it's to find out where the metal was coming from. There was delays getting that analysis back, in fact, he still hasn't, he waited so long, he sent it out to another one, another company, he hasn't gotten that back yet. I've since had the rescue brought to another diesel mechanic in the city. That was last, end of last week. I talked to him today, he got the truck in, the rescue into his shop today. I was hoping to have an estimate from him on the repairs for it. The estimate that I got from the town mechanic, his suggestion was to replace the motor in that.
And how much would that cost?
He said anywhere seventeen, eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars.
And then that would become the, that would become the reserve truck, right?
That would be the reserve truck anyway.
Correct.
To be the reserve truck. If it's fixable.
If it, yes. I mean, anything's fixable, but it'll be the reserve truck when you guys allow me to buy a new rescue tonight.
Well, right.
Until then, it's got to be...
Right, because it would be your second run piece, right? It would be rescue one and rescue two, correct? So it'd be a front-running piece right now.
Right.
Unless you've got another one. Because you got the 2012 is the third rescue?
It's gone.
Is that the backup?
So our reserve, what we call rescue three right now...
Was the 212, right?
It's a...
210?
It's a '06.
Oh, it's that old, okay.
But then we have...
Rescue two, which is a frontline piece out in North...
Sixteen.
Is the sixteen.
Right.
And rescue one is the 2012, that's the one that I'm having engine problems with right now.
So it's a twelve, not a fourteen, you said fourteen, it's a 2012.
So, it has been, since I asked last time for the monies, we've also had issues with engines, with some of our engines. It's an ongoing problem with apparatus. It seems like every week there's something else that's going on, but my take on it is we've been down at least one rescue for, since sometime in January, I'm not sure of the exact date. I'd like to thank the surrounding communities that have let us borrow the rescues. We couldn't do, we couldn't run without, we can't run without two rescues. But relying on surrounding communities to have a long-term fix like this is not, it's not the way to run a department, I don't feel. Like I said, completely grateful to Little Compton, Warren, Middle Town, lots of other communities. So I've been, I've talked to one company, it's the company that quoted me the price for $239.5, it's his demo, he's actually only had the truck itself for, I think he said like a month, it's got eight, nine hundred miles on it.
So I just want to point out, it looks to me, so today is Monday, March 25th, and it looks to me that the deadline for all elector petitions in the FTR is Saturday, April 20th, at noon or midnight. It's another question that's been litigated. So in less than a month, we will know whether, because it's quite possible, I mean, I can't speak for the Budget Committee, but my guess is that they're going to support this.
Yeah, my guess is too.
And what we don't know is whether there will be a competing, but we would know the answer to that question for sure, and unless I'm on thin ice legally, if on Saturday, April 20th, there's only one budget, and that one budget supports the rescue, or if there's multiple budgets and all of them support the rescue, then I'm definitely comfortable 1201 on Saturday, the 20th, authorizing this, unless you're telling me that's not cool.
Can I ask a question, actually, this might... Chief, do you know, if you agree to purchase this truck, do you put a deposit down? And what happens if you don't complete the purchase contract? Do you lose your deposit? Because then you're only committing $10,000.
This demo truck that I'm talking about right now, he actually brought it to the town last Friday, I think it was Thursday, Friday, Friday. He was showing it this weekend to a couple of departments that were interested in it. I told him I had this meeting tonight, he's holding it, holding it for me until Wednesday. After that, it's...
But your preference is for the new truck, not the demo?
My preference is for the demo.
Is for the demo?
He wants the demo because he can get it.
Get it right now. But is it fully apparel, with everything you need, or would you have to add?
Would it be delivered immediately?
The other thing is...
Within a month.
We've got multiple questions. Would the demo truck have everything that needs to be in it, or would we have to purchase additional equipment to produce it?
It would have everything that...
That a new truck would have, I mean...
Right. You know, we would have to take some of the equipment from our rescue and move it over. We wouldn't have to purchase any other equipment to get it up and running.
Right, well, I guess, to put it differently, if you were to buy a new truck, not the demo, you would order X that would go in the truck, and you definitely need that, whereas the demo, you're buying that and then have to purchase X in addition and install it aftermarket or something like that.
X comes with the demo.
Okay, so it is fully what you would purchase as a new truck?
Yeah.
But with the demo, you'd have to do the full purchase price at the time, to get back to Gio's question.
My question is, could you suggest to them that you don't have the ability to purchase it because there's no budget to purchase it from right now, but there will be in...
Potentially three weeks from Saturday, we'll have a final answer.
Well, you want to have approved, the FCR, which is...
Right, but my question to the team is, if we know that's the only budget, or if every budget approves, then we know for sure that that budget will be approved.
Yeah, but can Denise write a check for that when that's going to refer anything?
Well, if you can appropriate a deposit, then you can take the risk that the deposit is not there when approved in May, right? The balance of the money is not there when the budget is approved in May, but if he can hold the truck with a deposit, which is available in reserve funds that you can appropriate today or shortly, you know, the question is, will that, if you say, "I have $5,000," you know, I don't know what the number is, but don't sell it until May when I have the money, you know, you have to hold it for me until then.
So let me press this and then, I want to... Question one is, can we make this happen through a deposit that is something that we can afford, that I do think we can take a chance and put 10, 20 grand on the table out of our current budget, we'll find it. Question two, my question is, if on April 20th, we know that there will be a budget approved that will fund this, I think we can then enter into a binding contract on April 20th, unless you're telling me that's too aggressive. That, I don't know.
I, my other concern is purchasing.
That's my question. Do we have to go out to bid or RFP for this? I mean, it doesn't seem like we can just buy something.
My question.
Was that your question?
My question is with the demo, are you going to get a full warranty with it like you would the new truck? Or are you going to get...
Yeah. It's a demo, but he's had the truck, like I said, for a month or so, it's a brand-new truck. He's saying it's a, calling it the demo because it's the one that he got from the factory that he's going around showing. So that's the demo.
For the $250,000 one, do we then have to outfit it, or is that for everything?
That's for everything.
Everything.
It's not that much more expensive to get a new one, but you're saying it's a longer lead time?
It is. In the demo, like I just said, the demo is a brand-new truck.
Took a car on the lot rather than having to buy it from the factory.
Well, he's been going around showing it.
The demo is, he just takes it around to different departments to show it. Nobody's actually using it for transporting patients, they're just using it to show.
In my eyes, it's a brand-new truck.
Now, when you say equipment, stretcher you take off, rescue one that you have now and just put it on that truck, you don't get a brand-new stretcher? What about, but everything else you just swap out?
How long is the bid process going to take?
Does it have to go out for bid?
I'm concerned that if you decide this is an emergency, you know, why wasn't it an emergency when the truck broke down the first time, right? And this is, that's, I think that's your legal vulnerability. Now, vulnerable to whom? I don't know, but, you know, this is not a small-ticket item, and I think people pay attention to these sorts of purchases, and, you know, that, I'm not sure I see a comfortable way around a two-week process.
We still have one operating.
Even, like we do with the boats, boat engines?
Yeah.
But if we, if we put a $20,000 deposit down, I'm just throwing that as a figure, and the sale doesn't go through, the vendor who's providing the truck, he's been compensated for waiting three weeks not being able to sell that truck. He's getting 20 grand, we're going to, oh, whatever we give, he's going to lose it, so he may be willing to do that.
Well, and you could bid with that provision and say, you know, please bid on the truck, we are offering a $10,000 deposit, subject to final approval at our Financial Town meeting in May, and you set the number.
But he would have to bid for the... But is that kind of legal, to give him money and then tell him to bid?
No, I'm sorry, no, what I mean is, you draft a request for proposals, and the condition of that request for proposal is that we will not pay you until the Financial Town meeting approves us paying you, and only if they do, and in the meantime, we will only give you X dollars for a deposit, which will justify you holding the time, or justify you putting the truck in production and giving us, you know, putting us in the queue so that we're not waiting until next September.
Didn't we do that with the pickup truck for DPW last time?
We took that out of the special capital.
I'm not sure.
We can look it up, Joe, but I don't think so. So, my guess is that there aren't a lot of demo trucks out there. So, if you write an RFP right now, and part of the RFP or the RFQ is short-term delivery, then you're going to get responses from somebody who's got a demo truck that's ready to go. And if that's the case, you know, there's an irony here, because on the one hand, we're talking about, you know, language and in ordnance and the voters having to, you know, approve this, but here we're talking about, at the end of the day, if we only have one working rescue in a town of, you know, 15,000 people, many of whom are older, I'm sorry, I think it's an emergency. I think you go to RFP or out-for-bid, short-term, and part of it's got to be that it's got to be somebody who can get us a truck fast, and then I, for one, would put it on the council to vote, that this actually is an emergency that affects the public health, safety, and welfare, and not try and do funny things with the FTR or wait and see what, if there are any alternative budgets on, like, do it the right way cleanly and transparently, because I actually think only having one rescue truck right now that works is an emergency.
But we're not going to get it until May, until bid April anyway, with the bids that go out and everything.
Well, not necessarily, I mean...
If it was an emergency, we don't even send out for bids, we buy it right now.
No, but I mean, what did you do on the, what did you do on the engines for the motorboat engines? It's only two weeks to respond to that, right? The administrator and the solicitor worked on it, gave me a... So you could have responses from anybody who has an available demo or ready-to-go truck within two weeks, and we could, in fact, as long as Denise says there's enough money in an account to do this, we could have an emergency meeting, declare this a state of emergency, and authorize the expenditure out of heaven forbid the general fund, but that's like, that's an emergency. It's, I personally think only having one rescue in a town this size, one operating rescue is an emergency. We are borrowing trucks, because I saw our guys drive a Warren one today.
So can I try to move us along?
So, there are two trucks working right now.
Right.
It's not particularly ours, but I know they're driving Warren, I saw them.
We do.
Okay, they came into the E hours with a Warren, so...
So what I'd like to suggest is that...
There is two trucks.
It is... We will have a meeting on Monday, April 22nd, that's a regular council meeting, and the petitions are due on Saturday, April 20th. It sounds like a two-week process to write, publish, publish an RFP, so we're talking anyway that we're in for two to two and a half weeks, and if we wait three weeks, then we know that we have this issue solved. So, it seems to me that the way to handle this, to be the most transparent, is to put the bid out now, like as fast as we can. We have to wait up that two weeks, at that point, we wait one more week to see what the petitions are, if there are any, and then we can vote on it on the 22nd. Either it's a moot issue, and we didn't spend a quarter million dollars without voter approval, right, or we know where we stand and we have to make the decision at that point. Either way, you got to wait two weeks, so what's an extra week? If you want to call an emergency meeting at 1201 on Saturday, the 20th, I'm cool with that too, or we can wait till Monday.
Do we pay for these trucks? Do we have to rent them, or they just...
We don't rent them.
No.
Oh, okay.
They loan them to us.
Unless you're willing to go so far as to declare an emergency and also declare it for bid purposes, which now we're talking about sort of a double, a double emergency.
And let's be clear, there are two ambulances running in this town.
There are two, yes.
There is two on the road right now. I don't want people to get nervous, there's only one ambulance.
Right, and we knew it was a problem, so...
We are borrowing ambulances, they are functioning, okay.
So that's my suggestion. Does that, anybody got a better one?
I have.
But at any time, they could ask for their rescue back.
Enjoy.
I'd just like to say, I did get another quote from another apparatus dealer today who stated that he can have us a new rescue within 30 to 45 calendar days. It's the same type, it's the Ford, it's a small cabin chassis like I've been looking at, but it's $268, the price is $268. I just want to throw that out there, and I also have, I also have another quote from Greenwood Fire Apparatus up in Attleboro, again, for the smaller cabin chassis, they're $306,519. With the price, the $239.5...
Not going to beat it any more.
We're not going to beat that.
Well, he needs to bid quickly.
I want to know for the record, nobody ever likes to hear it, but I don't see anything in the charter that prevents us from spending up to $500,000 without declaring an emergency. And if we want to declare an emergency on top of that, as added, we really mean it, I think on this one, the public is behind us on making this purchase as soon as possible, because the, it's regular, you know, hits that we're having to go to this fire department or that fire department to borrow theirs, and people aren't enjoying that. So I, I think we're well-covered in any, whether we want to declare emergency or not, whatever the process is, to go ahead and spend that money, and if we want to put something in that purchase motion that makes that happen, saying that if a rescue is approved for the next fiscal year, it will count toward this or something to that effect, that's great too, but I just don't, I don't see any need to hold up on this.
Can I just clarify my point in that, I don't disagree with you, I think the question becomes, can you bypass the bid process without stating that it's an emergency?
Well, whatever, I'm not, I don't know the bid process very well, so whatever those requirements are, those requirements are. When you're talking about the money and the charter, with the charter...
When you're talking about the money and the charter, what the charter allows the town council to do, I don't, I don't see that as an issue in this particular case. You gotta crack the code for us?
No, not, no, I'm not cracking any code. Back in 2016, the council voted, and I'm, I'm just telling you, I'm just relaying information, to waive the bid process and purchase a demo rescue truck. Because it was, it was less and it was available and...
Did we have the money, though? What time, what?
Probably not.
What time, no, we did probably. What?
Probably not.
What time of the year was it? That's what I'm saying.
It was, it was bef, it was in June, so, but you...
So it was right after the...
So you knew that the money was available. But they waived the bid so that they could get the demo. So perhaps...
And the 2016 demo was only in 2016?
Yes, this was 2016 from Greenwood.
Oh, that truck's okay? The 2016 truck?
No, that truck is up and run, it's up and running right now, the 216.
But there was not, but wasn't there something wrong with that truck?
Yeah.
There was.
The whole electrical system?
There was, they didn't, the mechanic didn't know what was wrong with it at the time. I think it was just before the last meeting, uh, the, the February meeting. He figured it out. We were just waiting for that. Whatever it was, I, I, I don't know.
And then they sent it on park.
Yeah, and then, yeah. No, I'm just wondering if that's because it was a demo. That's what I'm thinking.
Just sharing that.
I don't know if we should've done it then, but...
I don't know, but I would...
It's probably the advice of the attorney.
But, but I would definitely defer to the attorney's advice on, on the bid process, because many of these companies do watch this. It's a big-ticket item. And if they think that we have violated bid guidelines, they don't hesitate even a little bit to come after us. And, and that's, I, I would definitely defer to the solicitor on that one, as to whether or not there's any way around a bid.
It's a safety issue. I don't think they would have a leg to stand on myself.
Well, no, I think it goes to the point that what Mr. Chichioni said earlier, which is that this has been going on for quite a while, and you can't... It, it's hard to, while it's an emergency, you can't necessarily justify that you didn't waive the bid process two months ago or three months ago, because you've sort of let, let this go on. So especially if they think it's because somebody is underbidding them.
But didn't we do that with the computer system? Because there was a problem with the computer system. That was an emergency, and we voted to spend that money for that computer update changeover. Didn't we do that?
It might be. I'm just saying that I would defer to the solicitor's opinion on that, because it, you don't wanna get, you don't wanna get caught in the middle of a bid violation complaint. It's not a place you wanna end up, so I'm not the solicitor. I would defer to him.
So make a motion.
Let's start making some...
Make a motion, put it out to bid.
We need to go to bid?
I, I, if it's an emergency, if you, you decide it's an emergency, then I think you have options for bypassing the bidding process. You still have an obligation to do the best you can to solicit bids. We might be able to get under, we, we, we might get, be able to get three quotes, which I, sounds like we already have. It may be that, that the, the, the vendor is on the state master price list. I don't know. But, you know, if, if any of those are true, I think, I think we have some better options. But I, I think if you need to decide something right now, then, then you, you need to decide whether this is, in fact, an emergency. And then you can proceed as you proceeded with the boat engines, which is authorizing, uh, your administrator and I to, to, to draft the least restrictive, uh, you know, or conduct the least restrictive purchasing process that's permitted by law. And I can look into those questions in the next few days and answer them.
So if we declare this as a state... If we declare this an emergency, then we're just gonna take it from the general fund? 'Cause I still don't agree that we can take up to $500,000 from the general fund. I have never, well, I've never heard that concept in all my years here.
I've never seen my words as you can. I'm just saying, and if you wanna declare an emergency, I'm happy to do that. I'm just...
Justin, if you were not, if we would've done that two years ago...
We don't need to argue this. We're just, we're agreeing about everything. We don't need to keep arguing about things we agree on. Let's... Well, I, I definitely don't agree that we have the authority to spend out of the general fund without a forfeits vote of this council. And I, I, the motion I would support is we authorize the bid for two weeks, and we wait until 12:01 on Saturday, the 20th of April, which is three weeks from Saturday. Then you solve the bid problem. We don't wrap ourselves into some kind of a, the next charter complaint about, or big complaint, it's three weeks from now. You can draft the language. It's so much the better if you can draft the language that will, will put a deposit that we will forfeit. And we can meet in two weeks. 'Cause I do think we can lock ourselves into a forfeable deposit that we have within our current budget. But this is new territory to spend money out of the general fund with less than a forfeits vote. And I'm not even sure I would support it even if it was a forfeits vote. We can do, solve this problem in three weeks.
I just wanna make...
Budget committee has a request. Every indication is that they're gonna support it. I cannot imagine, uh, uh, the school committee trying to, like, nobody's going to not support this thing. It's, we're gonna have the authority in three weeks from Saturday. What are we doing here?
Mr. President, I just wanna make sure that we do include a deposit, because we, we definitely lose that vehicle if we don't put a deposit.
Well, and if we wanna make it even shorter, we could call an emerg, we could call a special meeting, whatever the deadline is, that day, and, and, and order the truck subject to approval. And if we're wrong, and some electric petitioner comes in at 11:59 on Saturday and takes out the fire truck, which is very unlikely to me, but anything can happen, then we all, then we've lost the deposit. But that buys you one week if you don't wanna wait three. That's the suggestion I have.
So I'll make a motion.
I can move my own stuff out.
You can do your own...
Probably should.
Are the demos warranted as new?
The question is, are the demos warranted?
So the one from 2016 was warranted as new?
No, the warranty runs out after mileage or months or mileage, correct?
I don't, I don't know what...
No, we, we paid to fix that.
Right, but when they're, what he's saying is when they're warranted, you either get 50, five years or 50,000 miles, whatever comes first. I'm sure the mileage came first on the rescues. So they probably went over the mileage. That's why it wasn't warranted as a 16, 'cause it's only three years old.
One has a guess at what kind of deposit we're gonna put on the table? 10 grand? That's real money, right?
Do you think he'll hold it for 10 grand? That's the thing.
Yeah, I, I don't...
He may say, "I want 15 to hold it for a month and a half." Right. I'm just saying. We can, we can make an offer of 10. He may refuse it. So then you go from $239 to $260 or $300,000 to buy a truck.
And you lose your deposit. Well, we don't have to do deposit. To me, I only need the deposit if you...
Right.
If you don't wanna wait three weeks. Because once I know that there will, is no cha, once I know that budget will be approved, which we will know on April 20th for sure, then we can lock, we can bind the town. And even if by some wild chance of imagination, the election wasn't certified, and the past year's budget automatically carries over as the next year's budget by law, and we can still spend that money. So this deadline is solved three weeks from Saturday. Could somebody make a motion? It's quarter to 11. I think Donna has a motion. We're looking for the second. What's the motion? I haven't heard a motion.
I thought Rob, I thought you made the motion.
Nobody made a motion yet.
I thought you did. I thought you made the motion. She's second. That's what I thought.
So I will make a motion. So if that's what you're doing. The motion is to request the town administrator and the town solicitor to forthwith prepare a bid on the most compliant but short basis possible. $250,000. With a deposit, potential forfeable deposit of up to $10,000, conditioned upon approval at the Financial Town referendum. And that we set this matter for a hearing on Monday, April 22nd. To reconsider our position, and for some reason, that there is the possibility of a vote at the FTR that will not, that will not fund the fire truck. If at 12:01, there is no chance of a budget proposal going on the ballot that would not fund the item, then I think we can bind the town on, you know, April 22nd. You should disagree.
No, no, I, I, I just wanna, for clarity, we, we are not authorizing the expenditure of $10,000. We are authorizing the bid, which would include that, that expenditure will be authorized upon approval of the, the award.
Okay, till April 22nd.
And if on the 22nd, for some reason, there's no budget on the ballot that supports it, then I think we have to make some decisions on whether we're willing to declare an emergency. But by then, we'll at least gone through the bid, we'll at least have respected the budget committee and the FTR process. I don't know. That's my, that's my motion. Second? Any objection to proceeding with the vote? All those in favor?
Mr. President?
Thank you for...
Okay. Mr. President, we have Attorney Clark in here tonight, who's been sitting patiently. It's now quarter of 11, so I'm wondering if we could take that, please, out of order. Number six.
Is he going to an executive session anyway?
Well, we...
If, if we appoint him, he will.
He will, or we, or we schedule another meeting with him at another time.
I don't wanna interfere with your, your thing. Whatever you wanna do.
I, I would just remind the council that there is a deadline...
Right.
That needs to be met, and I don't believe you could schedule another meeting and still give him or, or anyone adequate time to respond to that deadline.
Would it be better to just take that together with the executive, and then you can do it together? I'll get out of your way. Is there anything else? I mean, that's the question, right? Is there anything else that needs to be taken up tonight? And we don't, we would definitely wanna do labor too, right?
Well, executive, we have to, do we have to do the rest of these items besides...
Is there any objection to continuing item 5, 7, 7, 5, 7, H, I, J, K, and L to the next meeting? Any objections from the public? Anybody here specifically for any of these that were... Yes, sir.
So the one thing with item number five that may be especially time-sensitive is the discrepancy in the numbers between the budgets in terms of the number of police officers, and whether or not additional money would need to be added, or we would, you would need to ask or suggest to the budget committee to add that additional one. And I know that's probably a long discussion, but there's not a whole lot of time for that. That would need to be resolved, I believe, prior to the next council meeting.
Should we consider cons...
Special meeting?
Yeah. I hate, I mean...
When, that says next Monday?
Yeah.
Monday, April 1st. All right.
It's fine with me.
All right. So the proposal is, we're gonna, we're gonna reach the litigation matters, which are G6 and then both, both closed executive session matters tonight, and carry all of our items to a special meeting. Oh, and K5. Okay, I'm sorry, K5. These are the litigation matters that three of us have, are involved in, although pending withdrawal. We're gonna recuse from that discussion, allow the remaining majority of the council to conduct an interview for special counsel on those matters. There's some discussion about a stipulation that will, I guess, also be in executive session, or you wanna do that on Monday too? Assuming you reach a decision.
That's just an announcement.
No, no, down here.
Yes, we're gonna have to do...
Why don't you go back and have some time while he's...
If we, if we appoint, we're gonna have to do...
Talk to him tonight, right? So those items would all happen tonight. I think we need to have some conversation about collective bargaining. We'll have a special meeting on Monday, April 1st. That'll be, not a continued at this meeting, but that'll be a fresh posted special meeting. We'll pick up all these other items. I'll report back to you on the governance policy and maybe the K9, if that works out too. Is that, is that, is there any objection to that? Is there anybody in the public that wanted to be heard on anything? All right. Think I need a motion on, I probably need a motion on that. All right. There's a motion to continue as stated in a second? I'm sorry, to set for special meeting. Thank you. All those in favor? So at this point, I'm gonna recuse. I'm gonna give you the microphone to me. Is that okay? And then I guess you're gonna want me back, you wanna want us back to go on executive session? At least for the... Good deal?
I can sit right here. Do you want me to go?
Mr. Clark, and thank you for being so patient.
Yeah, come on up. Thank you for being patient. Relax. You probably almost fell asleep, so you probably... I'm just gonna sit. All right, so we're doing item six, Counselor Hilton, Demideris interview, impossible vote for Attorney Peta A. They did all recuse. As you can see, this is kinda complicated. There's four of us that'll be making the decision tonight, and we will brief you in executive on what's all occurring. So it's an interview, impossible vote for Attorney Peta A, Clark in McKinney, Quigley, and Clark in LLP, Providence, Rhode Island, for special counsel services regarding litigation filed in 2018 against the town of Tiven, NC 2018-0153-0157-0158. Welcome. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
I'm a partner in a province law firm.
Yeah, just speaking to the...
I've, I was a solicitor for the town of East Greenwich for 15 years. I represented the town across the board in everything, including any litigation that was not covered by insurance. I've also been an insurance defense attorney for over 30 years, and I've tried well over 100 jury trials to conclusion in state and federal court. I am currently, within the past four to six weeks, serving as the kind of de facto solicitor for the city of Warwick.
For the city of Warwick?
That's quite a job, I would imagine.
Yeah, there are a few of us. It's kind of, it's kind of with the new mayor there. It's kind of in transition as far as who's gonna do what. And they seem to have certain attorneys for certain things, and then I seem to get everything, while the off-the-wall stuff and all the different stuff, just 'cause I have, I have a lot of experience in this.
And as you said, you do have a lot of litigation experience.
A lot of litigation experience, experience with open meetings, I mean, all the, all the applicable state, you know, laws, regulations.
Any questions? Anyone?
Fresh? No, Donna was gonna ask that question. Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions, and I'm gonna ask, ask Gio. This whole situation, I don't even, can all the suits be put to rest as far as Rob, Justin, and Nancy are concerned by the town council just signing off on the assenting motions that they have filed in Newport Superior Court? And Justin in Rob's case, motions to dismiss the lawsuit. And in Nancy's case, a motion to withdraw his plaintiff in lawsuits she filed with Richard Rom. Also, if all four counselors do this, and myself included, need to do is agree and file an assent with the court agreeing to their dismissal and withdrawal, which is just signing a piece of paper and then... just signing a piece of paper, and then we, that's all. I don't understand why...
But we've already voted, but we already voted on this.
But we already voted to do this. We, we already voted...
And I, and I, and it wasn't necessary.
Well, I know, but that was the argument then, but we've already voted to do this process, that's why we're doing it. It was a 3-1 vote, and we're doing it.
But it's still not necessary.
All right, well, but, but we...
I'm just saying.
Okay, but we, but we, but Donna, but we've taken, but we've taken a vote.
Spend $175,000.
No, and, and we're not, remember. It's not, it's not different. If, this is a litigation matter, Mr. Chichioni gets paid hourly for litigation, he won't be handling it. If we hire somebody else, they will be, so it's not an extra cost, it's simply a matter of, you know...
But it's unnecessary, all you gotta do is, is approve their dismissal.
Okay, but, but, but we've already voted on this. We've already voted to do this.
Why would you do this when it's not necessary?
All right, okay, you're...
It's not necessary.
But this is out of order, because we already voted to do this, and we're doing this process, we're going through the process.
But it's unnecessary.
All right, but you could have argued that the other, you did argue it, you didn't do it. So the vote's already made, Donna, it's, it's already made. We decided...
You're doing something unnecessary. All you gotta do is say, "Yes, we, we accept their dismissal," and you're done with it.
But we would like him to go to court and see that process.
And do that, and see that process through.
And see that process through.
So, so Mr. Clark, and obviously, this is a, this is Newport Superior Court, I'm assuming that that's not an issue for you to, to...
No, no.
That is maybe part of your regular round?
Yes, I mean, if you're in Rhode Island, you go to all the counties.
And, um...
I mean, you know, you tell that to people from New York, they look at you like you're nuts, but that's...
That, that is true, but in here, you know, it's Rhode Island, more than 10 minutes away, you know, pack a lunch and a sleeping bag, so. And as you can see, it is probably a bit of an unusual situation, a little contentious. I'm sure you've had situations in your prior practices, solicitor, in East Greenwich, where, you know, it, it's not always easy to manage a herd of counselors that don't always get along.
Exactly, I mean, there were, I was there for seven different elected councils, and some all got along, and the meetings were over at 8:30, and some did not get along, and they were midnight. So I, I am very well familiar with this.
Okay, been there, done that, okay. And I see that your rate is $175 an hour.
For municipal clients, it's usually more than that.
Which is actually a bit of a savings.
Anyone else, Joe? Like to entertain a motion?
Well, I was gonna ask, do you have any questions of us before?
Well, I assume you're gonna tell me what this is about.
So, so, so very briefly, we have some...
I'm not, I mean, I...
We have to do it in executive.
Exactly, I mean, I'm not intimidated by it, no matter what it is.
Okay. Okay, sure.
Do you? Go ahead, make it.
Oh. So I'll make a motion to appoint Peter Clark in, for special counsel services regarding litigation, NC 2018-0153, 0157, and 0158, at a rate not to exceed $175 per hour.
Do you have a second?
One second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
I want on the record that this is unnecessary, that I would take what everyone here to vote and accept their withdrawal, which is just signing a piece of paper, it's very unnecessary to go through this ridiculous step. It's very easy to do, you know it is, but you're just taking some ridiculous stand.
Hey, it's, actually, I'd like to respond. First, we did take vote. Second of all, th, this option was presented to us when, when, when the counselors who have recused received opinions from the Ethics Commission. The Ethics Commission advised that the council could, that the remaining council could determine whether or not they were more comfortable going forward with a special counsel to handle this matter. I think that, based on the, the discussions that happened, actually, the night that Mr. Chichioni was appointed, and, and various other discussions, that the most transparent, fairest thing to do is to handle it this way. We did take a vote, it was a 3-1 vote, so we'll move forward with that.
If I just, just may add a request, the typical process would be to enter into an engagement letter or an agreement, and that would be signed by the president of the council. In this case, you may want to designate whom you would like to sign that engagement letter.
Would you like to put that in your motion?
Yes, so I, I'll designate, should we do you or the, you want to do it? Well, how about...
I could designate the town administrator, correct?
I just think you need to designate some, some...
Because he's working for the town. Yeah, the town administrator.
And that'll be part of your motion. Do you second that, Joe?
Yes.
Okay, so motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Against? Thank you, we will meet within the next half hour with you.
I think we're going...
I think we have to do executive. Rob, are you coming back to go into...
Do you want to hit K5, or are you gonna, I don't know?
K5.
I don't know what that is.
I had put that on the agenda under solicitors' matters, but it does pertain to this, this same issue. It was just because we have, I assumed we would have new counsel, I wanted to make sure that, that he was aware that we've got a, a stipulation that was signed by the parties who are intending to withdraw from the case in question. And so I wanted to make sure that there was a copy of that presented to, to the council, but also to the new special counsel.
Gio, I'm gonna have you be in executive when we speak to him, okay?
Great.
Is that okay with you? Thank you.
And I think we'll be heading into executive.
Yeah, we just have to do a quick labor thing.
Okay, thank you. Again, thank you, Mr. Clark, for staying so late. As you see, we're striving to make the meeting shorter. We're not quite there yet, but we're getting it out there.
This agenda was long.
All right, thank you, everybody. And again, we're about to close out the open session, there are several items here that will be set forward on the, on the special meeting on Monday, May, Monday, April 1st, Monday, April 1st. That's here at 7 o'clock. So what I'll do is, I, I don't think we're gonna bounce up and down from the table, but I'd suggest on the actual call of the vote to go on executive session, we'll probably just recuse from that.
Yeah.
But the first motion that would be on the table would be sponsored by Counselors Hilton and Demideros, special counsel, newly appointed, possible litigation on Newport County, 2018, apparently limited just to the 0157 matter. Is there a motion for that to go into executive session?
I make that motion?
Second. Yes.
Is there any objection to note that Counselors Coulter, Griggs, and Cass will be recusing from that vote? I may in a minute so state, Mr. Harry, that's an I, okay?
Yes.
Counselor Hilton?
Yes.
Counselor Demideros, and Counselor Cook. Okay, and then remaining in executive session on the sponsor of the town administrator pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, 42-46-5A2, collective bargaining on fire, IAFF, that's our firefighters, Afsmi, and the Teamsters. May I have a motion?
Second.
A roll call vote, Mr. Harry?
Yes.
I?
Yes.
Okay, the time is 11:02, and we'll proceed to, they will proceed to executive session. Thank you.